...of this general sewer plan. But if you extend out the 7.8% rate increase for the six years, the next six years are affordable. As you saw, the costs become much more, go up quite a bit more following those six years. So we'll want to look at that as we go into rate planning. But for this plan, the financial chapter shows that the next six years are affordable. I think I'll pass this back to Ann for the very final.
So then, for the next steps. Stumble. So after tonight's meeting, we will venture into CIPA and public comment review. Once we've made our way through that process, which would probably take us about a month, give or take, then the document will be sent to the Department of Ecology into King County for their review and comments as well. When that comes back, we, our plan is to bring the final, the draft final document back to the city council for adoption slash approval. And then, once that happens, we have a current general sewer plan to start working from. A date for that final adoption hasn't been set. I'm targeting sometime in the summer of this year. So with that, we are done with the presentation and we will open it up for questions.
I think we had Benson and Bruce.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I guess, just a couple of comments. I guess the, well, first of all, I would like to get the PowerPoint if possible, if that could be distributed. But in order to make sure that when people see the PowerPoint, I think it'd be helpful if you actually included some of the disclaimers or disqualifications that was mentioned during your presentation. For instance, this reference to the $120 million spent over 20 years, I think people might see that and make certain assumptions. I think if you identified and clarified what assumptions you had when you made the slide, that would be helpful, just to provide more information. So that's my general comment.
Okay. Bruce?
So 120 million seems like a dauntingly large number, especially when we're starting small and then ramping it up towards the back end. But for those who weren't there, and I'll ask Ann, you were in the thick of this, when we replaced the section of lake line that we replaced a few years ago, wasn't that 24 million or so?
Yes.
Just to replace one stretch? And so as I look at this and see 120, and what it has, it looks like is 27 to do lake line R and R program, I wonder how we're going to get off so cheaply if that's for the rest of the lake when we've only replaced one section and it costs nearly that much.
Hi, I'm Laura Camerick with Curl Engineers. It's not the rest of the lake line. The data that the city has at this point in time, it's not assumed that your entire line will, the rest of your line will fail in the next 20 years. So it's just, it's in some-
Sorry, could you repeat that?
It's not assumed at this point, based on the data that the city has, that the rest of the entire line will fail in the next 20 years. So it's not, it's not the remainder of the entire lake line replacement in this scope, in this budget. It's only a small portion. It's section four and one other small reach.
Okay.
And we don't have any real data. We're just basing that off of the initial studies and understanding that was done for the last section. That's why there is a condition assessment for the lake line in the plan, that we can look at it and know exactly when it needs to be done.
I see.
Because it does say, at least in, Chip, in your CIP program, a future lake line repair and replacement program in the long term, 2028 to 2037 at 27.8 million. So that is captured, correct? That part is captured in this budget?
Yes, but the intent of that program is to start repairing pieces that are found to be deficient in the condition assessment, which doesn't necessarily mean the entire-
Sure. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that it actually was what was captured then in your CIP.
And the other thing, I guess, I think in support of your point, if I recall correctly, the big problem we had with the stretch we replaced, and probably with this other stretch, is that they were a different material than much of the rest of the lake line, which caused them to be candidates for an early failure where the rest of the lake line was ductile-
Yes. And that's absolutely correct. The section that we replaced, and there's one remaining section, those are asbestos cement, or asbestos concrete pipes. Once they get damaged, they get soft and they will fail a lot quicker. The rest of the pipe that's in the lake is cast iron, I believe. So it has what we would project to be a longer lifespan. It was also the newer of the pipes that were installed in the lake. So the AC pipe was the pipe that was installed first, and then somebody figured out that that might not be the best material to install in a wet environment like that. So they installed the rest of it as cast iron. So we're expecting that we have a longer lifespan with that pipe. You know, one of the issues, or one of the complications that we ran into with the replacement that we did for Reach 3, we have no access. We had no access to that line. One of the things that we talked about during the feasibility of both Reach 3 and Reach 4, on how we would replace those lines, we talked a lot about if we could only get into the pipe, maybe we would have an opportunity to line the pipe. If the pipe were, if we could prove that the pipe was sound, and if we could prove that the pipe was large enough to continue to flow the, to provide enough capacity for the flow, we might be able to line it, which might have, which would have been a lesser cost. The reach that we ended up replacing, those weren't options at the time. That was, that really needed to be a full replacement, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Benson, and then, oh, sorry, Wendy was next, and then Benson. Oh, and then Tom. Okay.
So I think this is for Francie. The part that got my attention is the pipes repair and replacement. And I'm also thinking about the pay-as-you-go policy versus a rate study. And I know the utility board's been sort of hedging that for a couple of years, and I wonder if you could talk about, hi Chip, I didn't see you sneaking. So that whole rate study piece and making sure that we can spread this money out over time, as I know we like to do, so we don't have shocks in rates or shocks in pay-as-you-go if there's some unforeseen situation? So just talk to me a little bit about that.
Let me make a couple of comments. I also wanted to go back to Debbie's question and just make sure that you know that that next piece of lake line in this plan is in the out years. It's beyond 2028, so it's a good 10 years out. When we do rate studies, we look at a six-year period, and we do our capital planning in a six-year periods. And we do smooth, we always look to, the utility board has for a long time sought and staff works to smooth our rates across that six-year period. When we have a plan, it does give us the chance to start to look beyond that. And in this case, and we've been saying, you know, we have a lot of needs both with the water system and with the sewer system. We may want to be looking to some debt financing and picking off a good chunk of work at some point in time, maybe possibly before the end of that six years. But there's staffing issues, space issues, et cetera, that go with that, for that.
Great. Keeping that top of mind, utility board.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Benson, then Tom.
This is a question for the staff. You know, it's mentioned in the Agenda Bill, and it was also during the presentation, a discussion or these comments about lack of access. And I guess the question I have, there is a mention in the Agenda Bill about encroachments by private property owners, the lack of access easements. So I guess, can you just describe in general terms, what is being done to rectify that? Who's taking the lead on that? I mean, I assume there's a cost factor, I would think, but.
Good question. I'll take the first crack at it. It's, yeah, yeah, look at the photos Brian says. We absolutely have access issues.
That's a perfect example, right there.
And you've seen a couple others earlier this last, you know, last year with some of the, you saw the Freeman Avenue photos. That's another great example of limited access. We really, the great thing is our staff has a great rapport with our residents, and so they're on a first-name basis. But I couldn't tell you how many of the pump stations actually have dedicated easements to and from. That's one of the things that, it's on our work plan for this year, and there's an RFQ out right now to go out and try and pinpoint where we do and don't have access issues, where we actually are authorized to enter the property to maintain our infrastructure. I can tell you that some of our more seasoned team members used to say that we had a lot of docks around the island, and they used to access some of these pump stations through boats. We don't have a boat that maintains our pump stations anymore. We utilize our resources and pay you back with Marine Patrol whenever possible, and they're gracious to help that. But that is definitely an ongoing issue for us that we are hoping to correct in the near future.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm probably a little behind because I wasn't in the first presentation. So a couple of my questions, I'm just going to read them off, and you can get back to me later. We don't have to take time tonight. But in your opening statements, you talked about how there were two reasons you looked at the sewer plan update. One was driven by the development in the town center. And I'm just wondering, there is some development going on now, and there might be in the future. And I'd like to understand the methodology, maybe not in here, how that will impact your planning cycle in the future. The second question is the lifespan on the pipes. You talked a lot about the projections and how you came up with the critical projects. I'd like to just have some general information about what is the lifespan of the pipes? In addition to that, I'd like to see the metrics on how many breaks you've had over the last 10 to 15 years, and if there's an upward trajectory. So, and the reason why I'm asking about that is I'd like to know about the contingency planning funds, because if you start having more breaks, it's going to eat up funds somewhere. And I know we've had landslides and some other issues that have come up over the last three years in particular. So I just, I want to understand your methodology there. My next question is, and this one I would like you to answer tonight, is, does the budget represent only the part that the city believes will fail over the next 20 years, or is it to replace the whole system? And then, if you can answer that one tonight, and then, I'm just curious more than anything else, where do you staff think the big ramp-up's going to come from for the 80 million at the end of the cycle? So the first third is covered over the next, in your short-term and medium-range plan, but then there, like Bruce was saying, there's this huge plop at the back end for 80-plus million. So especially to Saleem's point with the inflation costs, I'm just curious, in your thinking, and maybe it's a question for Chip, how do you, how are you going to address that 80 million at the end of the cycle? But mostly, if you can just answer the one on the, and we can talk about most of those later, but can you just clarify what the budget represents?
I'll let you do the budget piece, or Curl do the budget piece.
Can I start with sort of a technical?
Sure.
I'll start with the brief comment on technically how we came up with those estimates. We use some parameter called remaining useful life, and that indicates how long we think the pipe has left in it before it starts failing. And so, and so what we use for that was the available information, and that's what we call desktop analysis. We're not actually inserting cameras, we're not digging up the pipe and doing physical tests on it, we're looking at age and material. And so, using that metric, it does seem like most of the pipe would need to be replaced. However, we know that pipe is highly variable in the ground. It depends on construction, that's a huge one. It depends on how much flow it's had for its life, soils, all sorts of things. And so that's the important part of Brian and screws getting CCTV cameras in there and start looking at them at a more finer detail to refine those estimates. Because it's, there's a potential that some of the pipes won't need to be replaced in that 20-year period.
I'll say that this is a 20-year planning tool. And so, that's how, that's how the budget was developed, based off of what they, what we see as our future needs in the sewer system. I will say though, that we're ramping, as Chip's going to do the CIP kickoff tonight, this is a 20-year planning horizon, you're going to see this in six-year increments as we move forward through our CIP process. And these projects, you'll be seeing these in the CIP process over the next six years and continuously over the next 20, I fully expect. The next years are going to be really, really important for us. I mean, there's no, there's no way to sugarcoat that. The information we get on our pump stations and the lake line is going to drive this conversation. And so as we get that information, you will expect to see this team back in front of you to give you updates and talk about what's in store for us. Hopefully it's good news, fingers crossed. But that's the reality of the situation. I wish it was, I wish it was different, but you know, that would be unfair for me to sit here and say it's going to be roses because we don't know what it's going to be.
Great. Council, any further questions? Okay, quick one?
Maybe I missed it, but capacity is 0% for everything, and there are pipe upsizings in here? Are those not for capacity, for some other reason?
That's because as the pipes continue to age and fail, you get more of that influence infiltration, and that's actually causing the capacity issue, rather than building additional development in the town center itself.
Okay. And since I don't see any upsizing, does that mean that the capacity already exists in town center for the zoning? I'm pretty sure I heard that was already done.
Yes. There are six improvements in and around the area of the town center, but in general, yes. The pipes going in the major roads in the town center are appropriately, based on our analyses, for the zoning that was currently allowed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, staff. Much appreciated. And as you mentioned, I'm sure we'll be seeing you again in the months and years to come. So with that, we're going to take just a two-minute break so that we can let our guests leave, but also put the tables away, and then we'll get on with the regular council meeting. I think that means council, if you could please stay close. Okay. Hello and welcome back to the March 6, 2018 City Council regular meeting. The council's just completed an executive session and study session on the general sewer plan, and will now move on to special business. Our item of special business is Agenda Bill 5400, Women's History Month and International Women's Day Proclamation. With that, I'd like to hand it over to City Manager Julie Underwood.
Mayor, if I could, invite our proclamation recipients up to join me. I'm really excited about these amazing island residents. And joining us will be Dr. Lisa Chin. Dr. Chin is the president and CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of King County. Dr. Chin was founder and executive director of Year Up Puget Sound, a job training and internship program that helps low-income young adults with education and career opportunities. Myra Lupton, many of you might know Myra, she has been a long-term island resident. She has helped to spread the word about the good things that the Youth and Family Services Department does for our city and for our community. Amanda Clark, Amanda, I see Amanda everywhere, number one. She has served on our Arts Council, president of the Friends of Luther Burbank, president of the League of Women Voters of Seattle, King County, just an active resident. And I think also really cool, joining us are two amazing young students here at the Mercer Island High School. Dana, which one is Dana? Dana, can you pronounce her last name?
Burega.
Burega, Dana Burega, and Julia Graham. They're two of the three co-presidents of the Gender Equality Club at the high school. They did not have that when I went to high school. So that's pretty amazing. So the Gender Equality Club is a student group committed to studying feminism, educating themselves and others on the historical and current challenges facing women and putting their actions, and putting into action their ideals of commitment to women's equality. So hopefully, many of us have made the path for you all a little bit easier. And I think what's neat about these women is you can see the generations they represent of our islanders who have made a difference, I think, in women's lives and women's history. And in fact, one of them, joining us, is our own mayor, Bertland. She's going to come up and read and present the proclamation to these women.
So good evening and welcome distinguished guests. I can only reiterate what Julie said, and that is when I graduated from Mercer Island High School just a few years ago, of course, there also was not anything related to a gender or gender equity club, so it's tremendous to see the progress that we've made. So with that, thank you for being here, and thank you for accepting this, familiar faces and new faces faces. I look forward to seeing more from, showing up in front of council in months and years to come. So with that, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic backgrounds have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas the 2018 National Women's History theme, nevertheless, she persisted honoring women who fight against all forms of discrimination against women, presents the opportunity to honor women who have shaped American history and its future through their tireless commitment to ending discrimination against women and girls. Whereas International Women's Day is a time to reflect on progress made, to call for change, and to celebrate acts of courage and determination by ordinary women who have played an extraordinary role in the history of their countries and communities. Whereas now, more than ever, there's a strong call to action to press forward and progress gender parity. There's a strong call to press for progress, motivating and uniting friends, colleagues, and whole communities to think, act, and be gender inclusive. And whereas this year, International Women's Day comes on the heel of unprecedented global movement for women's rights, equality, and justice, sexual harassment, violence, and discrimination against women has captured headlines and public discourse propelled by a rising determination for change. Now therefore I, Debbie Bertland, Mayor of the City of Mercer Island, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as Women's History Month, and March 8, 2018 as International Women's Day in the City of Mercer Island, and encourage all islanders to take the opportunity to empower women in all settings, rural and urban, and celebrate the activists who are working relentlessly to claim women's rights and realize their full potential. Approve the 6th day of March 2018. Thank you. It's a pleasure having you here. We have a-
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We were glad.
I'm never there.
And this is your opportunity to say a few words. Yes, we would like, we would like to invite our guests to come up and say just a few words. Myra, do you want to start?
I think that I have to start with what I read not too long ago, and I think that it's because of all of you. And in surveying the states in this country, the City of Mercer Island was found the best place to live on Mercer Island.
That's right.
We just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing the work that we do in the high school. It's just two of us on behalf of a much greater organization, and we're really proud of what we're able to do and the support that we have. So thank you all.
Ditto to Julia. And it's just been amazing watching Gender Equality Club grow. We both joined as freshmen, it's very first year, and each year we have like Galentine's Day in February. And it was great to see that this year, we had the most attendees ever, and the club is really growing.
Well, I'm very pleased to be here, and it's so nice to see the generations that were here. But I think that for as long as I've been on Mercer Island, which I think is 1985, the number of women who have been involved in all sorts of activities, who've been editors of the reporter, who've served on the city council, I think that, I don't know if it's in the water in Mercer Island, but I think that the women have been good for Mercer Island, and Mercer Island has been pretty good for women. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the council, and to the mayor, and to everyone here, because I only stand here in front of you because there have been so many women and men who have come before me and paved the road, that it has been very much my honor and privilege to follow. And so I would like to say thank you, and to recognize the council for this honor, and the mayor, and say that I am humbled to accept this on behalf of all the women who could be here but are not. So thank you.
All right. Photo opportunity.
So I think we need the group photo now.
I thought you was taking them all.
We'll come in front of the podium.
Wendy, you've got to come down here.
Wendy, Wendy. Yeah. In front of the podium. Let's go. Yeah. Good. I'm going to come over on the other side.
Mayor, can I say something? Guys, so anyway, I just want to again congratulate all the women who are here to accept the proclamation. A special thanks to our young people. I just mentioned that I have had the pleasure of working with Dana on the Healthy Youth Initiative, Alcohol and Tobacco, and Other Drug Committee, and she is a terrific leader. And even though I haven't had a chance to work with Julia, it sounds like she's a fantastic leader as well. And I just learned that, I happen to have worked with your mother in the legal profession. So anyway, it's a small world, but again, thank you so much for being the future leaders of this town, of this city, and I look forward to seeing you guys in the years to come.
Thank you.
So in 20 years, when we come, we're going to expect to see you all sitting up here, talking about the sewer line projects and all kinds of good- So, kind of along the same lines of Women's History Month, I'm really excited to say that I am a cover girl on the International City and County Management Association, the monthly magazine that goes out to probably 11,000 or 12,000 members across the world, featured in their March issue, and really featured to really highlight, I think, really what the changing face of local government, meaning we are seeing more women serve in City Manager, City Administrator roles. I would like to point out, however, the number is still really one in five, so not very many women, so we do still have work to do, and hopefully our young students will consider City Management. It's a great field. So, it really is. So, you can make a real difference, but I'm really honored to represent Mercer Island on the cover of the magazine this month, so wanted to promote that. Congrat... I do have it here. Okay. The Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation raised a record $225,000 from its annual breakfast fundraiser that was held on February 7. That total was an amazing 21% increase over last year, and it will support the Youth and Family Services, the city's social services department. Just as a reminder, the Youth and Family Services Foundation provides about 10% of that budget. We really count on them, so we certainly are so pleased and grateful for the support they've been able to provide the department. And one of the things the foundation approves are sometimes special projects and additional funding, and so really ecstatic that in 2017, they approved and funded the reinstatement of a half-time mental health counselor at the middle school. So, again, I want to congratulate and thank the foundation board, our city staff, and most of all, our community for supporting the great work of our Youth and Family Services Another congratulations, the city earns another Well City Award. So by meeting specific criteria in the wellness program, and it's not unlike, if you're familiar with Energy Star, you know, every time companies achieve those criteria, the criteria gets, the bar gets moved higher. So we are always trying to strive for meeting the criteria, the increasing demands of that. Really excited to report we have earned that, which means we receive a 2% discount on medical and dental premiums. So this is quite a significant savings, and I do want to congratulate our HR department and wellness team for achieving yet again this award from the Association of Washington The CAG, the Community Advisory Group, had its fourth of five meetings on Saturday, March 3, to discuss revenue options and formulate preliminary recommendations. The CAG's final meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 2, at the Community Center. And of course, you can find all this information online at mercergov.org/financialchallenges, and of course, all are welcome to attend. Also want to point out a few additional community meetings that we'll be hosting to inform our community about financial challenges, and of course, everyone is invited. The next community meeting we're hosting will be on Wednesday, March 14, at 1:00 p.m. at the Mercer Island Library. And then we're hosting another Telephone Town Hall on Tuesday, March 27, at 7:00 p.m., and the location is in your own home. So please consider registering at tinyurl.com/mi-townhall, and of course, more information can be found at our website. The City of Mercer Island staff and Arts Council are working together to create an arts and culture policy addendum to the city's comprehensive plan. A draft version of that statement has been written, and the group is soliciting input from the entire community. That draft will be posted by March 8 on the Arts Council webpage, and a public meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 14, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. So all Islanders are invited to participate in this process and to give us your feedback about those draft goals and policies. Really too excited, very excited to celebrate the grand reopening of the North Field at Island Crest Park on Wednesday, March 14, from 3:30 to 4:15 p.m. Immediately preceding the first varsity baseball game, we'll use the new field. The 2.4-acre sports field is now 100% synthetic turf and has new highly efficient LED lighting, a deluxe scoreboard donated by the Mercer Island Baseball Booster Club, and below the surface lies natural cork infill and a new drainage system guaranteeing year-round play. This project, as you know, would not have been possible if it were not for the generosity of our community and many of our grant funders that raised $700,000 to go towards the project. So very excited about this, and please join us for a ribbon cutting next week. If you're looking for something to do, our next senior lunch will be hosting a St. Patrick's Day Lunch. No surprise, we're having corned beef and cabbage, and this will be on Thursday, March 15, at 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. And it's, of course, for our residents who are 65 and older. It'll be at our Community Center. You can register and also get transportation by calling 206-275-7609. Another reminder about the Mercer Island Half Marathon, and in this one, I just want to point out, I know Rotary is seeking volunteers to help them with this huge event, so if you're interested in helping our community, visit Mercer Island's Rotary's website at merceralinhalf.com to learn more about how you can help. And then finally, I want to point out, I hope many of you have seen the collective letter that was sent out by the School District Superintendent, our Police Chief, and our Youth and Family Services Director. This letter was sent to the community, and I'm really pleased it went out. I know myself, having three children in our school system, I'm certainly one of those parents that are just very concerned about the recent shooting in our schools. I feel like it happens way too frequently, and really pleased that the letter highlights what the city and the school district and our Youth and Family Services have been doing, and really, they've been collaborating since 1995 on this. So the letter called in to the large support of the city and the school, and called in really having this supportive school culture that really tries to make a priority, the connectedness of our children, and then of course, recognizing the role that each of us as parents play in influencing our children. So that letter went out, and hopefully you've seen it, and hopefully our community has also seen that. And that's all I have.
I'd say that was a substantial... City Manager Report, you have first.
It probably would be good to just clarify, you said the recent shooting in our school. I think you meant on the national scale, not locally, but it would be worth just clarifying that, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm speaking to the recent shooting at the school in Florida. That's right. Yeah. But I think, you know, the question that I often hear in the community, among Youth and Family Services, our police department, our schools, is that community in Florida is not unlike our own community, and I think that's the alarm bells that are going off, and what are we doing, what's our safety net? And I think that letter is meant to try to address that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't want to take anything away from the message you were delivering.
But good to clarify, no shooting.
Completely agree with that, but so those who are just, you know, watching and tuning in, who might not be aware that we're talking about the national stage.
Thank you for that.
Not the local stage.
Okay, great. So with that, next on our agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to council on any item. When it's your turn to address council, please speak into the microphone, state your name, address. You'll have three minutes, and the general guideline is please be civil, be constructive where possible, and if you need the details, they're on the back door. So with that, is there anyone here for public appearances tonight? Welcome.
Ira Appleman, 9039 East Sherwood Drive. The Financial Challenges Charade is nearing an end. City staff want to dump another two levies on Island taxpayers. Months ago on Nextdoor, based on my 21 years of experience, I described how this scam works. Staff appointed a Community Advisory Group, or CAG, to make it appear that a representative group of fellow Islanders, not the city, is demanding substantial tax increases. The CAG was loaded with city stooges, those who can be relied upon to vote with the city, along with innocent Islanders who just want to give back to the community but aren't aware of the scam. Those Islanders who've been critical of the city in the past were excluded from the CAG. Only three substantive meetings of the CAG were held, one a month. All the meetings consisted of city staff lecturing the Community Advisory Group on why the levies were needed. The facilitator then encouraged the group to regurgitate the lecture but not analyze it. Inconsistent with Mercer Island practice, no public comment to the CAG was allowed. I cannot think of a single case in the last 21 years where a public group like the CAG was scheduled, was shielded from public comment like this. Last Saturday, the final step of the scam was completed. Staff took a poll of CAG members. The facilitator insisted, over objections, that the first CAG members to speak would be those who agreed with the levies. Those CAG members were allowed to speak with no contrary views allowed. Next, the facilitator insisted that only those CAG members would be allowed to speak who agreed with the levies, if additional conditions were met. A group of CAG members who disagreed with the levies wanted to present their views before the poll vote, but that was not allowed. Naturally, under these conditions, most CAG members voted for the levies. Staff is likely to instruct the CAG to go for an operational levy first, followed by a capital levy, in order to look fiscally responsible. As one CAG member pointed out, the city's sending contradictory messages. On one hand, the city claims it's broke, but on the other hand, the city is beginning a new program for the arts, likely costing millions of dollars, some of which going to MICA. The CAG represents a new low in misdirection and lack of transparency. Last year, when Councilmember Grous left, he encouraged you to continue the efforts he championed to deceive and ignore Islanders rather than take direction from Islanders. The Financial Challenges CAG represents that deception and misdirection. I hope this City Council will reconsider, dismiss the CAG, and reject the Grous tradition of deception and disrespect.
Are there any others? With that, appearances are now closed.
Can I respond?
So with that, the next item of business is the Consent Calendar, which contains payables, payroll, AB 5379, AB 5394, AB 5398. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
It's a motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tom, could you vote? We need a vocal.
Is that aye?
Okay, sorry. Saw the thumb. All right. Any opposed? Motion passes and Consent Calendar is approved. With that, we now move to regular business, and the first item is Agenda Bill 5401, 2019 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program Budget Kickoff. So, welcome Finance Director Chip Quarter.
Good evening. It's time to begin the budget process, or beginning the budget process, and we divide our budget process into a capital segment, which will begin first, starting tonight, and then followed by the operating, which we kick off with the council at your mini-planning session in June. Tonight, I just will briefly orient you in terms of the CIP calendar for this year, go over how the CIP is organized. Francie then will give you a primer on the CIP, the CIP 101. Go over the CIP revenue forecast, focusing on our REIT, our gas tax, vehicle license fees, impact fees, and utility rates. Then we'll bring it back to me, and I'll go over significant issues. On that last item, this has always been a challenge for me with the council, what we'll be seeking is just preliminary direction, and it'll feel like, you know, this is your last bite at the apple. It's not. It's your first bite at the apple. It's preliminary direction to staff as we develop the CIP, then we'll bring it back to you in June, and you can react to it and give staff further direction about, oh, let's do this, let's not do this, let's do a little bit more of this, et cetera. And so I'll remind you, when we get to significant issues, because I have some meaty ones here, you've seen these before, it's not your first time seeing these, but I have some very specific recommendations, and but just so you know, you're carving your initial direction in clay, not in concrete. It's just, you reserve the right to kind of refine your direction later in the year. So, yes, ma'am.
So, I just want to reiterate what I'm understanding, and that is, this is direction regarding the process. This is not direction regarding the actual list of projects.
Right, yeah. We're not, it's just, we need a little bit of council direction, just in developing the CIP. We'll bring it back to you as noted here in the calendar. And so, for example, on June 19, you get the preview of the six-year CIP, this is 2019 through 2024, and we really focus on any kind of new projects which haven't been on the six-year CIP before, and any significant modifications to existing projects that are on there. Then we'll get the preliminary budget document, which includes the six-year CIP on October 2. Your first, you know, big meeting on kind of going over the CIP will be November 6, and most of that, the budget review meeting is dedicated just for the CIP. You'll finalize your changes the second meeting in November on the 20th, and then budget adoption is on the 4th. I should mention that we update the REIT forecast if necessary multiple times during the year at the points where you see the asterisk noted. Now, how's this thing put together? How's it organized? We have, the six-year plan has sort of two hemispheres, your capital reinvestment plan, that's about major maintenance, okay, or replacement of existing infrastructure, existing assets, whereas the capital facilities plan is your new infrastructure or new assets. The best example of that is pedestrian bicycle facilities. Then we organize within each plan, the projects by category, and then we look at project status. Let me explain what I mean by that. So the project categories include these four, parks and recreation, open space, followed by streets, pedestrian bicycle facilities, then general government, which includes public buildings, technology, equipment, and vehicles, or fleet, and then finally utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater. Within each of those project categories, we identify projects which are either funded or undefunded slash partially funded, and within each of those funded, unfunded categories, we identify such an existing project, meaning it's currently in the six-year CIP, and there's really no change to it other than an inflationary adjustment. It could be an existing project where there's a modification to scope, or to timing, or a major cost modification, or it could be a brand-new project. Same thing for the unfunded, partially funded projects. With that, I'll invite Francie up to give you CIP 101.
So, good evening. Francie Lake, your Deputy Finance Director, and I'm going to give you a quick graphical overlook of the six main CIP funds. So the street fund, and I should say, this is looking at the current six-year CIP plan, it's, and this is your average spending over the current six years, so from 2017 to 2022 is the current six-year plan that's in place. So the street fund, our spending on average is $3 million a year, and the largest expenditures within there are your arterial street program, which makes up 37% of the spending, 1.1 million, residential streets, 24%, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities make up about 11% of the overall program. The revenue side, real estate excise tax, so big piece of the pie. This is why we spend... So the street fund, our spending on average is $3 million a year. And the largest expenditures within there are your arterial street program, which makes up 37% of the spending, 1.1 million. Residential streets, 24%. And pedestrian and bicycle facilities make up about 11% of the overall program. The revenue side, real estate excise tax. So big piece of the pie. This is why we spend a lot of time forecasting REIT. It is our biggest revenue source, both for the street fund and the CIP fund. In addition to that, for streets, fuel taxes fund about 16%. And for the last few years, vehicle license fees fund about 11%. And I did want to point out that we do use fund balances. When we have fund balances built up, we're usually building them up for planned projects, and we're spending down fund balances across the six-year period. The capital improvement fund, our average spending in the current plan is 3.3 million a year. On the expenditure side, city parks make up the biggest portion, 1.6 million. Open space and vegetation management is a big portion, also part of parks, at 504,000, or 15% of the pie. And city buildings make up about 21%. So that's reinvestment in the city's seven buildings, 714,000. And again, the revenues, and I know I'm going fast, but if you have, if you need more of a 101, I just should interject, we are available to meet one-on-one. So, okay. Real estate excise tax, like I said, the largest piece also for CIP fund, 52% of the funding. And there's the Mercer Island Parks Levy, makes up 252,000 of the funding. 110 of that goes for minor improvements at Luther Burbank. And 142,000 of it goes to open space vegetation management. So it's dedicated. And I also wanted to point out that in this current six-year plan, there are quite a few parks projects that were either partially or unfunded and depended on getting grant funding. So 17% of the funding planned is grants and contributions, which are not necessarily in hand now. They're hoped for. So technology and equipment is our smallest capital fund. And our technology projects, reinvestment in the multitude of city systems, makes up 59% of the spending at 273,000 on average during this plan. In addition to that, there, we invest about 19% in fire-related equipment. 53,000 a year is getting set aside for replacement of SCBA. And that's a self-contained breathing apparatus that the fire department uses. And then another 8% for just general fire equipment, like hoses, et cetera, for our fire trucks. There's also a sinking fund for the Mercer Island Community and Events Center, about 51,000 a year is going into that. And I'll leave it there. This fund is not, technology and equipment is not able to be funded by real estate excise tax. So this is funded by a transfer from the general fund, 250,000 a year. That's its biggest funding source. There are some additional general fund transfers that are specifically for the community and event center and for replacement of police radios. That makes up another 20%. And then the utility funds contribute to projects, technology projects, which are, which also support the utilities. So the water fund, two biggest pieces of the expenditure pie are replacing substandard water mains, 52%, and water system improvements at 37%. And this is, similar for all three utilities. Rates are by far the largest funding source. So for water funds, it's 95%. There's also about 5% comes from connection charges and interest earnings. And overall, we're spending on average 3.4 million a year on projects in the water fund. So sewer fund, bit of a smaller investment at this point, 1.2 million per year. And you just heard a lot about the sewer system. Graphically, for this six-year period, the sewer collection system improvements are making up 61% of our expenses at about 735,000 a year. And pump station improvements at 270,000, or 22%. So, and again, rates and connection charges are the funding source. And finally, the stormwater fund, largely the expenses are spread in a couple of areas. But about a third of the expenses go to the conveyance system for the pipe system, new and extensions of the pipe system. There's also replacements of the conveyance system, about 11% of the spending, or 108,000. And then our ravines, our storm basin improvements, another little over third, 388,000. And again, here, stormwater rates make up 90, 91% of the revenue funding source. And fee and lieu payments make up the remaining 9% in the current six-year period. So we're spending about 1 million per year on stormwater improvements in this six-year plan. Okay, I am going to move us on to revenue forecasts. So I wanted to just speak a little bit in general about forecast, the forecast for CIP. So real estate excise tax is, as Chip has already mentioned, updated several times a year. And REIT is reactive to the market. It's reactive to interest rates, the economy. Right now, the limited number of homes that are on the market is having its effect. So during the last 10 years, REIT has ranged from a low of 1.3 million for the year in 2009 to this last record-breaking year, where we brought in 5.7 million. Motor vehicle fuel tax and vehicle license fee forecasting is done annually as part of the TIP process. And both of those forecastings, forecasts are relatively straightforward. And then utility rates are reviewed and updated annually. They're reviewed with the utility board, and you, the council, adopt rates on an annual basis. So, and the last, rates that you adopted were last fall for this current year, 2018. So let's talk about real estate excise tax. So this is a graphical picture of the last 10 years of real estate excise tax receipts. And what I want to point out, so the upper graph, the yellowish-gray line, is revenue receipts, and the red line is number of home sales. And so, and I'll start with number of home sales. What really drives real estate excise tax and the way we forecast is based on the forecasted number of home sales as well as the average home sale price, which I track monthly. So, and during the economic downturn, the Great Recession, 2008, our home sales really dropped down to 265. They've since rebounded back up to close to 500 sales a year. On the revenue line, the peaks that you see are years that have significant commercial sale properties. So 2008, which is the very first one, 2010, 2016, and 2017. And those are detailed in your agenda bill. I'm not going to go through them, but those are driving peaks. The line that's in between is really more representative of our average home sales. So our home sales that sell for 5 million or less. So the forecast. And I have adjusted this table from your agenda bill. Benson caught a small error in the average sale price that we were forecasting for 2018. Chip and I have played with several scenarios and didn't quite get that one updated. So it is, this is a revised forecast, slightly lower than the one in your agenda bill. So we are forecasting 450 home sales in 2018, 19, and 20. And we're forecasting an increase in the average home sale price of 5% in 18, and then about 4% from there on out for the six-year period. That will generate for us, just across the six years, including this year, a little below 4 million to, up to almost 4.5 million by the end of the six-year period. So significant revenue for us. I'm going to leave it at that. Sure.
On the updates, on the last chart, you showed the first, the top part of the table, but not the lower half. And the reason, I guess, I'm looking at it is, on the historical real estate excise tax table, it shows that the REIT revenue average was 576,000 per year. And then the forecast was, that you're putting into the projections is 276,000 less per year. I'm wondering if that number has changed now with your adjustments?
No, at least twice during the last 10 years, shorewood apartments sold. And that is an absolute outlier on the, in terms of sales. I am assuming that's not going to happen again in the next six years. It drives up that over 5 million sale amount so much. Historically, I'm not thinking that's going to happen again.
What you're telling me then is that the 100 million in sales of Shorewood in 2010, and the 210 million dollar sale in 2017, if you back out that 300 million, it takes the average down to roughly 300,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, yeah.
Okay.
So again, motor vehicle fuel tax. What I want to point out here, and this is looking historically, again, at the last 10 years, is generally speaking, well, motor vehicle fuel tax is distributed to cities as a statewide revenue based on population. In years when there's no change in the rate, so fuel tax is based on, is a rate applied to gallons of fuel sale. When there's no change in the rate, Mercer Island's portion of fuel tax tends to decline. And that's what happened from 2008 through 2014. In 2015, the state legislature passed the new transportation plan and increased the fuel tax rate. It went from 37.5 cents to 44.5 cents in August of 2015. And then it went up again to 49.4 cents in July of 16. So that's when you see the revenue start to increase. 2017 is the last year of an increase. Now we're going to, now unless there's another change in the rate, our revenues will slowly decline. So here's the forecast. I just have it slowly declining from 500,000 a year down to 430,000 over the six-year period. So it's fairly simple, fairly predictable, not 100%. It's, it is a forecast, but it's a good, solid revenue source for our street fund. And I think I'll move on. Vehicle registration fees. We, the council created a TBD back in 2014, and we began collecting fees mid-June 2015. We've had two solid years of collections, and they've been very solid, 372,000 in 2016, and 375 in 17. I am just forecasting that 375,000 to continue for the six-year period. Hopefully, it'll increase a little, but without a lot more vehicles or without a change in the rate, it should be pretty solid. I should just point out that the fee, at this point, can be raised to $40 per vehicle now that 24 months have passed since the $20 fee was put into place. And I'll keep it simple.
I just want to ask a question. I mean, I know you guys didn't have enough time to do this, but I assume that we're going to get some sort of, some additional information that would show the difference between your forecasting versus the actuals during the past few years? So that we can see, basically get a sense of how accurate the forecasting has been? Is that something that we can get?
Do you want me to jump to that? I did a little bit of that work, which we could show you at the end.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll keep going on revenues, and then maybe at the very end of the presentation, we'll come back to that. Okay, impact fees. So impact, transportation and park impact fees were implemented in 2016. They're charged only on new development. So they must be spent on facilities that meet the increased demand from development. So as we're bringing them in right now, they're being reserved until specific projects are identified. So they're not really part of our routine funding package. They, our forecast at 30,000 for parks and 60,000 for transportation in 2018. And that's based on 15 new single-family permits. So new out of DSG's projection of 55 total single-family permits. So, and the inflation factor that I've used is 2%. The inflation on this particular fee is the E&amp;R Construction Index, and it's averaged, it was 1.4% last year and 1.7% the year before. The inflation could go higher, but I've used 2% at this point. I'm going to leave that at that. And utility rates.
Just quickly on the impact fee.
Yeah.
Are you sure that you didn't maybe catch a transitional year that you're now carrying in your projection? I know that the average back in 2015 was 22 and 1/2 net new houses, which would have been the number.
That's what they were forecasting, or that's what happened in 15? Okay.
No, no, that was an average.
Okay.
So, you know, the number might have been off. It was all part of kind of the GMA package that was used in some conversation, another, Scott has it. But I'm thinking that what you've got is a period of actual impact fees paid. And then you've turned that into units, and now you've inflation-adjusted the fee. But I think your unit count might underestimate the net new homes.
I hope you're right.
I've asked Scott Greenberg if he can update us on the '16 and '17 GMA housing targets.
Okay.
To goal, which is the number you need. Because in there gives you, if you look at the '15 and prior, he's got these numbers posted on the website. It's actually a link I can send you. It shows you the net new houses, which would be subject to those fees. And I think you just got yourself in a transitional period where you had some vesting and then some that paid. But the numbers all come out higher. The actuals come out higher than your projections. And I think it's that discrepancy that you're grabbing. Just a thought. I can send it to you if you want it.
And our projection came a little bit out of 2017 being kind of a boom year, and Scott expecting permits to drop off a little bit in 2018. So probably need some adjustment in the out years.
Just remember 22.5, because that's an average that doesn't care about impact fees or boom years. It's over the pre-boom, or mid-boom.
Utility rates. So the adopted rates for 2018 were 5.3% for water, 7.8% for sewer, and 1.5% for storm. Going forward, we're projecting the same rates for water and sewer at this point, and 3.5% for storm. The 2017 to 2022 budget forecasted storm at 3.8% for the six years. We were able to take a little bit of a lower rate increase for storm this last year, but projecting 3.5% going out. And then I just want to caution you, this is, this is really kind of early, and these rates well-changed as we develop the six-year plan. But I just wanted to show you that. Okay, and I'm going to turn it back to Chip.
So Benson, on the forecast accuracy, we just ran out of time to put together what you were asking for.
were asking for. I had Manfred put together a couple of years on REIT and the gas tax that we can look at right now if you'd like. Is, is the rest of the council interested, or is there something that we can do offline with Benson?
I would.
Okay. Let's just go there right now, then we'll come back to significant issues.
Okay, so for 2016, we had budgeted to almost, just shy of 3 million, brought in So our actual receipts for REIT were 40,000 less than we had forecasted. 2017, we forecasted, again, close, just a little shy of 3 million, but brought in. And these, I should just emphasize, these are numbers for home sales that are 5 mil, equal or less than 5 million. So I've excluded those exceptional commercial sales. But 2017, on our just home and small business sales, we brought in 631,000 over budget, or over the forecast. And that was a couple of things. We had sales of 490, whereas we had forecasted 450. The year before, we had been closer to 450. And really what happened is there's a shortage of homes on the market, and the average home price has really pushed up. So I had forecasted an average home sale price, home sale price of 1.33 million. Our average actually came out closer to 1.5 million. That's a hard thing to forecast, but in this case, it's great news. So that is a quick look at REIT.
Just a quick question on that. How much time is between the snapshots that you took?
So these are the, for 2016, this was what was the budget that was developed for the 2015-16 budget? So-
It's a 14 forecast.
Yeah, 14 forecast, and then for 17, it was the forecast done in 2016. Yeah. I guess the other one didn't make it in. Okay, whoops, sorry. I did fuel tax, but it didn't, it's not saved here, so I can show that to you later.
While she's doing that. So you've got two components to your REIT forecast. You've got average price and then volume. Is there any kind of assessment that's been done around, during the boom, the bottom of the market kind of got sucked up? And whatever happened to it, happened to it. But the $500,000 homes are gone, the 600, the 700, the 800. And what you're experiencing is that climb in the average sale price kind of eclipsing your forecast. Is it fair to say moving forward that we've kind of moved that, like maybe in a modifier around the average? As, as you look at the market and the number of homes that exist in the lower segment versus the mid-range versus the high, could, could you do something to try and predict the bottom of that market getting sold off rapidly and, and your average moving up? Something that gets you on that trajectory?
Ideally, yes, but we just haven't had the time to do that kind of thing. And I, I just will mention, on, on 17, you noticed that the actual was close to 500. We budgeted 450 sales. Remember all the news in the real estate market in King County was about supply being very constrained. We expected as a result, we, we expected as, you know, the, our price to go up as a result because of constrained supply. We didn't expect to hit close to 500 in sales. That really surprised us. And I'll be really curious going forward, as there's a continually constraint, or continuing constrained supply, whether we'll be able to hit. That's why we came back down to 450, if we're very concerned about that. But this, this is, this is not an easy one to forecast. This is not like property tax, which is very easy to forecast. This is a challenge. We do our best. We try to be conservative.
I think I just want to add too, I think it was in 2008 when the average home price dropped over 30%. So we've seen some significant drops also.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to significant issues. Oops, there we go. Okay, significant CIP issues. We, we'll talk about CIP-related budget policies, or I will point you there, exhibit one. The other major issue is technology equipment fund balance, water and sewer utility capital needs, which you've got a sense of earlier on this general sewer plan. And then unfunded projects, in terms of the maintenance center, the thrift shop, and other unfunded capital projects. Regarding the budget policies, we're just recommending, and just a reminder, this is, we're just seeking initial direction from the council, and we're just planning on sticking with our existing budget policies and developing the CIP for 1924. And you'll always see me kind of seek the pulse of the council, does the council agree with that recommendation? So I'm just kind of looking for nods, thumbs up, or if you have any questions. That you'll have the opportunity to revisit CIP-related budget policies when we come back to you in June and again in November. But we're just planning, stayed the course on our policies there.
So council, any questions with regard to the policies? Okay. See none? I think we're gonna take that as a thumbs up.
And just so you know, what happens is we kind of get into this and build this, this thing, is things come up, and, and they may relate to a particular budget policy. And we will then bring that up and tee that up for the council and give you some options for your consideration.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think this affects the policy itself, but you know, obviously the first one is identified as the beautification fund.
Mm-hmm.
And I know at the last CAG meeting, there was some discussion about merging that fund into-
With the general fund.
That, that doesn't take away from this policy.
No, this, this will get teed up for the council at your June mini-planning session when we do the operating budget kickoff. We'll seek council direction on that issue.
So my general assumption right now is that because the CAG hasn't formalized its recommendations, that we're seeing the policies as they've stood historically, and the staff has recommended any amendments. It is not including CAG work in progress.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, next, let me kind of walk you through this one, our technology and equipment fund. And as a reminder, big picture, this accounts for, again, technology project, projects like Francine mentioned, our community center has technology and equipment needs to be replaced, we have a sinking fund in there, and fire equipment replacement. On the currently adopted 17 through 2022 CIP, there were projected negative ending fund balances beginning this year. Negative 42,000 is not very much, that can be absorbed. And I should mention, these negative ending fund balances, these exclude the reserves, we have sinking funds in, in that, in the, in that fund. And so I don't worry about negative 42,000, reserves can temporarily absorb that, buy, you know, gives you working capital. What I worry about is 2019. Now, when we get into developing the CIP for 19 through 2024, these numbers will change, but I expect them to be negative again. And so just want to, this, this is, we put this on your radar two years ago, we're putting it on your radar again. And I, I should also mention that, you know, when you see the negative 216,000 projection in 19, what that means, we're not, you're not taking the 215 after it and 162 and becomes additive. It is if you can address the negative fund balance of 216 in 19, that solves all future negative balances. Okay? So what are the primary drivers of these projected negative ending fund balances? One is that big enterprise asset management system, over half a million dollars. Now, 375,000 of it's funded by utility funds, but it's, that, that's a really big project. Financial system upgrades coming up in 19, just under 100,000. Mobile asset data collection, that project is due again in 2019, 84,000. Website refresh redesign, currently planned in 19, we're trying to bump that up, that's 65K, but it's hard to bump it up when you've got negative ending fund balances, right? Then technology strategic plan, we're due for another one in 2020 at 75K. Those are the kinds of things that are causing a problem. So what's the recommendation? We're trying to cull together some one-time funding, because that's really what we need for now. We're looking at existing technology projects, still trying to get our hands around this. If we can find savings from last year's technology projects, we'll take that savings and redirect it to plugging that gap in 2019, 2020. Alternatively, or in addition, I should say, we have a little bit of general fund expenditure savings. I'm still, numbers are still moving a little bit, trying to nail that down, but looks like I might be able to come up with 150, maybe 200K from general fund expenditure savings as a way to plug this. We'll be coming back to the council to talk about disposition of expenditure savings and that kind of thing. But this is my preliminary plan, if needed, if needed, is to tap a combination of those things to plug that, that projected deficit. Yes, ma'am?
No, I was just gonna say, council, any questions? Inherent agreement then? Okay, good? Yeah?
This kind of goes back to Francine's presentation. The, back in 2015, when the community pushed for the building impact fees, they were implemented in 2016, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's right, isn't it?
In 2016, early 16.
Yeah, like in December 15.
And those revenues are fairly small right now, is what I heard you pretty much-
Relatively speaking, yes.
Okay. And they aren't, they aren't on any of the charts that illustrate there are revenue stream for anything, but they're, those funds are loaded where?
Well, you have transportation impact fees, which go to the street fund-
Correct.
And park impact fees, pardon?
And a reserve.
Yes. And park impact fees, which go to the capital improvement fund, and they're both reserved, they're reserves in each of those two funds.
Okay.
So they are accounted for.
And a reminder on impact fees, they have to get to the relative impact of the development, right?
Yeah, they got strings attached to them. Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, so then with regard to technology and equipment fund, council feels comfortable with where we are? Great.
Oh, this is going so much better than two years ago. Okay.
Don't think so.
I know, I know, I'm looking for wood.
Give us time.
Yes, yeah. Okay, water sewer capital needs, you got, again, got a sense of that earlier this evening. Just a reminder, our 2015 water system plan, there's a long list of substandard water mains. We saw the, the draft of the general sewer plan tonight. And this is something that we've been talking, we've mentioned to the council in the past, the last budget go-around, back in 16 for the 1718 and the 17 through 2022 CIP. We've also mentioned it, Wendy will remember being on the utility board before, Debbie will probably remember, if Dave were here, he would remember. We've been talking about this with the utility board, that preparing, that we know we need to ramp up and, and do more capital projects. We've been trying to get these, the sewer plan done, so we can come back and bring some data to you to really prove it out. There's still more work to be done, but professionally, we've known for a long time that we need to really ramp up our infrastructure, because very simply put, it's not like when Mercer Islands developed, you had all this infrastructure just put in over a period of time, nice and stretched out. Rather, you had a huge amount put, you know, back in that 40, 50 timeframe, and then stuff, you know, thereafter, save a huge chunk of infrastructure, water and sewer. Remember, sewer is 100 miles underground, water is 100 miles of water main underground. I can't have a, a big chunk of that coming due for replacement at the same time. And so that's why we're playing with these ideas of, of trying to line pipes and extend its useful life and doing what we can. But this is not a surprise, and just, it's, it's so old. A bond issue is in our feet, in our future, because there's just such a huge chunk of it. And we're not going to be able to feather it all out over 30 years. That's just, that's, that would be unlikely, in my opinion. I'm just the finance guy, but I've been listening to these engineers for many, many years. This is not a surprise. And we will dial this in over the next six years. So we mentioned this earlier, we really need to renovate, expand the maintenance center, which is another topic I'll talk about shortly. We need to get that done first, because in order to ramp up and do more capital projects, you need project staff, you need contract project staff to do that. Our current project engineers are already maxed in terms of what they're taking on. Their ability to take on more is very, very limited. And so I have no place to put the project staff. And even if that weren't an issue, quite frankly, the space issue, which we'll talk about shortly, they're so packed in their life sardines, it's, it's, it's unacceptable. And, but when you add the need to ramp up capital projects, we need to do something about the maintenance center. So there's a, there's a, there's a connection there. In my view, we need to deal with that first, and then they advise us a few years to kind of work through some of the capital needs in water and sewer, and tentatively are thinking about ramping up, okay, in that 2021 to 2024 timeframe. Not sure how steep that would be, that's to be determined, but we're expecting, as we get into developing this CIP, you would expect some kind of ramp up. Now, I should, I should press the pause button and mention, I'm envisioning, and we're doing our internal kickoff with staff tomorrow, where you do a CIP that doesn't assume a ramp up, okay, and doesn't assume a maintenance center thing, and say, what can we get done in the six-year period? That's option A. And then you have option B, which assumes, you know, renovating the maintenance center and assumes some kind of ramp up in that last three-year portion of the six-year CIP, if you will.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, Chip, I think you just answered my question from the planning session about the bubble at the back end. So what you're, what I'm hearing you say is there's another bond that will have to be circulated to address a lot of the water sewer challenges.
Absolutely. That's, that's, and what, and, and the reason you do that is when you get, I'm just making this up, so you do 20 million dollars worth of projects, or 25 million, then that's a lot of money. And you, you don't collect it, obviously, in rates in the first year, you bond it, issue bonds and spread it out over 20 or 20, or more than 20 years, and spread those costs out. And that, that helps mitigate the, the impact on utility rates when you spread it out like that.
And then the second part of my question is, are you linking the need to renovate and expand the maintenance center to doing some of the capital improvements related to water sewer? Because, I mean, if you're just looking for administrative staff, I might, just to do some of those, I might, in my head, I might go to, well, we can do what we have done with the schools in times of surges, get trailers and, and put folks in those. I mean, what is, what is the correlation between the maintenance center building and the need to house staff in it and the water sewer project?
I probably make too much, it pushes it over the edge. Right now, there's a need to expand and renovate that building. We'll get to it in just a second, because I have a separate issue, so just hang tight. But in terms of water capital needs, this is what we're, what I'm thinking in terms of the option A, option B, in developing the CIP. Option A, again, assumes really no maintenance center and, and probably not much of a ramp up, if any. And option B assumes the maintenance center and some kind of, some level of ramp up.
Counsel, are you good with that?
I'm, I'm saying, we'll be developing both.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Just on a side note, I went, I went to the maintenance center and the administrative offices tonight, took about 20 minutes to walk through. Jason was kind enough to take me through. It is not well represented, it is not represented closely enough with these statements. It is an atrocity up there. I don't know how we attract and retain talent in that working environment, because it's literally, you walk into a corner and there's a workstation, you turn the corner and there's a workstation. You can tell that if it rains, there's also a bucket there. I mean, it is really, I, I see exactly what you mean by saying you can't ramp capital projects when you need staff to help manage that. There's literally nowhere else to put people there unless maybe they're working on a project and changing the oil in the truck.
The bathroom is the next spot.
No, I actually saw the bathrooms, and there is no room in the bathrooms.
I'm referring to the stalls, anyways.
Or the changing rooms, or anywhere else in there it is.
All it takes, Jason's happy to take in a tour, that's usually what is the most effective, is to see what they're dealing with. And just so you know, we're, we understand that, we, there's no vision to create this, you know, 10 by 10-foot cubicle space for every employee, because a lot of these folks are out in the field, right? But the, and we do a bullpen approach, and, but the amount of spaces they have is, it's, it is atrocious.
And I would add that anything that looks usable is being kept, and is a very modest plan to expand just the minimum necessary.
Yes.
Is not making a Taj Mahal out of anything, it is just decreasing the misery index.
That is true. Thank you for those comments.
Cheerful summary.
Okay. So, speaking of the maintenance center, so just to kind of brief, because we have some newer members on the council, we, this has been a need for a long time. We first publicly identified it for the council back in January 2016 at the council's planning session. The maintenance center is a little over 15,000 square feet, includes a warehouse at a little over 1,000 square feet and a shop at 1,000 square feet. It houses your public works and parks maintenance employees. That's about 45 regular FTEs. I forgot to update that number, it's probably closer to 46, plus 17 seasonal employees. In our view, and staff has been in the process of developing, there's a preliminary design, and the most cost-effective option, you may not know this, but there's a grass roof on there, and is get rid of the grass roof and build a storey on top of that, where the grass is effectively. grass is, effectively. The current preliminary estimate is $6 million, I know, it shocked me, and I won't get into the details, other than to note that the geography and the stormwater requirements were much greater than we initially thought, and that's a big chunk of the cost. We'll talk more about it.
And also, just not to overlook in that point, what we talked about tonight, is that they would continue to work in there while that was done.
Yes.
So it's not as though you're moving all that staff out and housing them, you're moving some portion of it, maybe a third of it out, while construction is undergoing, you're probably making life very miserable for the staff remaining there, and then, so to council member Akers' point, there's gonna be trailers involved.
Yes.
There's no way it won't be trailers involved.
That's true. Just so you know, there is some available one-time funding, and the REIT surplus from last year, from several commercial property sales, which I've been hoping for, when the market is absolutely tough, you know, like it is, I'm always hoping there's a little bit of property turnover, and there was. And so, almost 2.4 million in REIT surplus, and I've been kind of trying to protect that, and hold on to it, because there are various needs that are out there, including this building. There's also a little over $1 million general fund surplus from 16, not 17, from 16, the member encouraged the council to park it in the contingency fund, that's where it's sitting, depending on the potential, you know, outcome of a levy, operating levy lift on the ballot this November, and if that makes it to the ballot, if that passes, it frees up the $1 million, if it doesn't pass, we wanted to use that $1 million to help provide a bridge next year to maintain services for some portion of next year, and so there's other funding needs that are out there. Groveland Beach, you'll be hearing about that, that project is, projected cost more than what we budgeted, and so they need another 290,000, they need actually another half a million, but we found part of it from existing park projects, and I need 290, which could come from REIT or general fund surplus. Public parking, as you know, we have sound transit that set aside money that we need to effectively match, we do 51%, they do 49%, you need me to find money somewhere. Well, those options include the REIT surplus and the general fund surplus that are up there. What about ongoing funding options? You got three, effectively, you can do what's called, I call it, a capital levy lift, and this is one of the options that we've been exploring with the CAG. Remember, the council asked us to engage the community about the city's capital funding needs, and so I approached it as a, an opportunity, if you're interested in doing more capital and accelerate it, a capital levy lift is a great way to go, requires simple majority approval. This is how we funded our fire station, Fire Station 92, is we got a cap, a levy lift that was passed by the voters, and I issued bonds for nine years, and I'm using the levy lift to pay off those bonds. And so, here's a way, an option before you, is you could do a nine-year capital levy lift. 20-year excess levy, that's also called a 20-year bond levy, you go to the voters, requires a supermajority or 60% voter approval. Do I sense a question? Okay. Finally, there's also increased utility rates to fund 40% to 50%. Why do I say that? When you look at the staffing for the building, look at who are the utility funded, utility rate funded employees versus the tax funded employees, it literally is about a 50/50 split, coincidentally. And so the original vision was to do 50% funded by taxes, that's why I've been trying to hold on to that REIT, and 50%, 50% funded by utility rates. The reason why I bump it up potentially to maybe, or having utility rates only do maybe 40%, is because that cost at $6 million was much, much higher than I was expecting. I was expecting about a $4 million project, not a $6 million project. The impact on rates is just that much more, and so I thought, let's play with the possibility of, of doing tax funding from 50% to 60%, and utility rate funding of anywhere from 40% to 50%, exploring those possibilities. So, staff recommendation, this is different than what's in your packet, I apologize, France and I have been running around with our heads cut off, and I just didn't have a sufficient time to be thoughtful in your agenda bill, I had time today in the presentation, so let me explain. What I'm recommending, and Julie supports this, is taking your surplus REIT, the almost 2.4 million, and let's dedicate it to the maintenance center, and any future REIT surpluses that might happen this year or even next year, and dedicate that and accumulate 50% to 60% of the funding for the building, of that $6 million in REIT. And then, plan on issuing bonds to fund the difference, as early as maybe 19, it might be 20, and using utility rates, okay, to fund the debt service. That's what staff's recommending, and so we're seeking your okey-dokey to kind of starting to put together the capital budget with those assumptions in place, and let's see what it looks like. I will be the first to admit, what I worry about, as we talk about the need to increase utility rates, is, is just the impact of the maintenance center on utility rates, I'm trying to avoid double-digit increases, and, and so it's, it's, it's a constant balancing act, but initially, that's the direction we're hoping you will endorse.
Go ahead, Benson?
I'm sorry, Chip, you, I mean, you're going pretty quickly, and you may have already covered this, obviously, this staff recommendation is different from earlier discussions where the topic of the maintenance center renovation being paid through either a part of the capital levy lid lift or as part of operating. It was part of the discussion about...
Part of the CAG discussion, you mean?
Well, no, not just, whether it was part of the CAG or not, there was also earlier discussions about funding the maintenance center renovation through some sort of, some sort of levy lid lift, if I recall.
Yes, it's an option.
Okay, so, but that's, you're saying that, that you prefer this current recommendation as...
This is what I recommend, and, and just so the full council knows, and a number of you have been at those CAG meetings, and we talked about it briefly on Saturday morning, is, you know, we identified our various capital funding needs, which include two public buildings, maintenance center, thrift shop, and a whole slew of underfunded projects related to sports fields, related to arts, related to PBF, and a few other things, right? And you can't, you can't fund them all, it's just, the number's just too big. And so what I had mentioned at the CAG is, you know, when I kind of put on my, if I were a Mercer Island resident hat, and I got some blowback from one individual, is I don't know that the community would be super supportive of a capital levy lift for a maintenance center, but I suspect they'd be more supportive by comparison for a thrift shop, okay? And so what I had mentioned to the CAG is, we have this one-time funding set aside, hasn't been dedicated yet, but the REIT funding and the general fund surplus that potentially could be dedicated to the maintenance center, and with the balance of the funding coming from utility rates, thereby not needing to put it on a capital levy lift. It's just an option.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So, up there, you have the 2.37 million from 2017, and then you have the 1.03 from 2016. When you go to your recommendation, you're only including 2017, you're not including the 1 million from 2016.
That's right.
So where's the money from 2016 going?
I'm saying, I don't want to touch that yet, because let's see what happens if there's a levy lift that goes on the ballot.
To reserve?
Yeah, listen, hang on to it, and, because if there's a levy lift on the ballot, an operating levy lift, and it fails, I'm gonna be recommending, here's $1 million that we can use to help, you know, bridge some services. I have a way to balance 19 with a combination of one-time money and other revenue increases.
So you'd hold on to that 1 million, basically, as above?
Through November, yeah.
Okay. Wendy?
So I know the numbers are tough, but do you have a ballpark guesstimate of what the rate impact would be and how long that would be for to fund that?
It is not fresh in my head at the moment, I need to revisit it, because I have the old numbers in my head, when, that we were talking about a $4 million building, and so $2 million taxes, $2 million rates, and the rate increase, as I recall, was like 1.2% to 1.5% of a rate impact on top. Pardon?
On the 4 million.
On, on, for funding 2 million of the 4 million.
2 of the 4, okay.
Okay, and so now we're talking about going up potentially to 3 million, and so there should be a proportional increase that should put, push it closer to 2, in, in theory.
So what was it on 2, do you remember?
Pardon?
It was 1.5 on 2.
About 1.2 to 1.5, if memory serves me.
Got it, okay.
Big if, memory serves me.
I think you were also saying that that's lower than the average community around us. If this was at the CAG. You were talking about average, well, not the increases, but the average final rate.
Utility tax.
The utility tax.
Yeah, yeah, I was talking, right, right. Just that our, our, our utility tax rate on the water sewer stormwater utilities, which is currently 8%, supposed to sense that into this year, that is below the average in the state, which is 9.5% for water sewer utilities, 8% for stormwater utilities.
Okay, Bruce?
Not a question, more a comment, a little bit about the framing of this, you know, so you, you, as you said, brought out the need to renovate the maintenance center over a year ago now, and, and you highlighted, I think, very accurately, that it's one of the least glamorous sort of projects for us to take on, yet it's something that, at the time, you were saying we need to start thinking about it. I think what you've made clear through the presentation, and it wasn't entirely sort of front of mind for us before, was that we don't really have the option of just muddling along with an overcrowded building because of the need to ramp up this utility work that has to be done, to, to deal with the aging infrastructure we've got on the utility side. So I'm certainly supportive of this heightened focus on getting this maintenance center remodeling, expansion done, and, and I think the way you're framing up to do it does certainly sound like a rational and reasonable way to try and patch together the pieces to do it, so that there's no one big draw from, from some other need. So I'm supportive of where you're going, and thanks for putting this together.
Okay, thanks.
Celine?
I'm gonna do the ditto of what he said, the day move, but I'll also draw back to the comments I made earlier, which is, if, if we know there's a need, and we can spend the money and get ahead of inflation, I mean, this is a project that you thought was gonna be four and is now six, I'm not sure how much of that's tied to just cost of construction going up, but certainly some of it is, and this is a precursor to doing the projects that you're gonna spend, that Jason and his team will spend a number of years doing the research to prioritize in order of magnitude, it makes perfect sense to me that, that we need to do this now, and after seeing it tonight and seeing the conditions, I mean, it really cannot wait. It's a high, high priority project, so I fully support just doing that.
Chip is a good spot. I am, I'm, I'm stunned, this is great.
Okay. Yeah?
I'm trying to put all this in context of what's going on with the CAG in the bigger budgeting process, so part of my question is probably for Julie, like, procedurally, how is this all gonna play out? Because the CAG is headed in one direction with some direct, in their planning assumptions, and I feel like I'm dealing with a multi-dimensional onion right now, and just trying to peel back the layers, and I appreciate your presentation. So if you could, somebody could just, because this seems like very different than the direction it was given to the CAG, and that's probably okay, but there are also things on your slide that I'm wondering how it factors in, like the sound transit matching funds, and I think that's several million dollars as well, and I'm thinking about cost overruns and other stuff, so I don't know if I agree or disagree, because there are so many questions in my head right now, I'll defer to my colleagues probably, because you've been dealing with the budget a lot longer than I have, but I, I think that I still have a lot of questions on where the funding is gonna come for some of the unfunded projects, as well as how it relates to the CAG, so.
Right, and just so you know, I'm not blind, I'm sensitive to the optics, I wish we weren't having this conversation at the same time as we, we are regarding operating funding challenges, it's not ideal. Here's the reality, as I try to help the CAG understand, is that REIT, almost 2.4 million, it's got strings attached, I can't use it to address operating funding challenges, as the council knows. It has to be used for capital purposes, pure and simple, and I have no flexibility there. And so, all these little things, there's all these strings attached, you have to be, you have to be cognizant of what those strings are and where they lead to, and that's always my challenge, to kind of explain that to the CAG, and, because I've had people ask me, well, just use the REIT to balance the budget, just tap your fund balances to balance your budget. Well, and on that, let me just mention one thing, there's a group of, within the CAG that has, you know, proposed for 19 to 20, using fund balances to balance the budget, and the only way you can do that is if you drain the contingency fund, which is our rainy day fund. You will not hear me recommend draining that fund to balance an ongoing structural problem when, I hate saying this, but we are overdue for another recession, and I'm not gonna drain that fund and put us in a position financially where we have zero in that fund or minimal amount, and, and then, you know, the things kind of drop off on us. And so you have all these things, you're trying to take, you're trying to balance multiple things, and I don't have the luxury of focusing just on operating, it's multiple things at the same time, just a little perspective, for what it's worth, probably obvious to the council.
Mayor, if I could, one of the things that Chip presented on Saturday to the CAG were really some capital funding options, and so that was presented, however, due to the size of the group and running out of time, we really, at this juncture, haven't gotten their input on any of those funding options. So I know that's something that, that we have yet to get their thoughts on. I know when Chip presented this idea of doing a combined operating and capital, in particular, funding a renovation at the thrift store, and seeing that, wow, maybe that renovation could actually result in added income, I think there was general interest in that, that seemed, and I think that was roughly, got us around $300 for the average assessed value home per year, so there was some interest in that, especially if, if we saw a return on that investment, so, but at this point, the other scenarios of what, what could, $100, 125, 150, we really need to get their input on, on that. The other thing I want to point out, generally on kind of reserves and these funds, as you've probably, those of you who were around during the recession, what you typically do is you stop contributing to those funds, you just, you don't have the money to do it, and hopefully you don't rob those funds, but sometimes cities have to do that because they're trying to operate. So here we are, trying to get ahead of it, trying to plan ahead, do those forecasts, and actually work with you in advance. I think those are great strategies, spending down reserves, spending down, when you have another strategy to replace it. So I think that's the only question I have, is what's the, you know, other strategy that would replace spending down those reserves? For one, do you have a plan to pay back those reserves or pay back those funds, for example? So I just caution us to take a prudent approach about, about this, and, and recognize, I think, one, we're trying to get ahead of our planning, and, you know, and Chip is right, that there, we're due, a recession occurs roughly every 10 years, we're due to have a recession, though I think right now, I'm optimistic, we'll still be healthy over the next couple of years, so, but he's your finance director, you want him to be probably conservative, so.
Okay, I'm gonna move us on to the next one?
Well, I think, just a couple more points. You did raise the issue of the sound transit money, and I think it's really important to reiterate, that the sound transit money is not a check that was written to the city, they're reimbursable, and they're reimbursable for specific projects or project categories, and basically based on proof of delivery, so unfortunately, that money doesn't go into the general fund. So with that, I know that Celine had another comment.
I just wanted to build off what Julie was saying about, but I want to make sure I'm understanding the distinction between reserves and surpluses. You're, you're talking about contingency reserves, the contingency fund, the rainy day fund, not replacing the 2.37 of surplus REIT, right?
Right, or I'm just saying, any reserves, because the CAG committee, I mean, there are a number of very, very bright committee members that realize we are sitting on a number of reserves in a different, in a, in different buckets.
Let me let you know where I'm going.
Yeah.
When I think of the 2.37 and then the 1 million of 16, that, that's one-time money, because this is actually the surplus that was beyond the residential, and we have a long history of spending one-time money on, you know, one-time projects, right?
Exactly.
So this, to me, is perfectly paired, and not really replaceable, because it's dealing... So this, to me, is perfectly paired and not really replaceable, because it's dealing with one-time money on, you know, one in an 80-year project. I agree with you, the optics is not great, we're having this discussion, and hopefully building some consensus around some staff priorities, because the CAG is considering different options. But this is not inconsistent with what we've done in the past.
Right.
And I think this project really matches perfectly with the nature of the surplus funds that we're talking about.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna encourage council for us to move on. Go ahead, Benson.
I'll be quick. You know, I was at the CAG meeting, I would say that it was a lively discussion, and I would, and it was a good discussion. I mean, there's a lot of great ideas that were mentioned. I would hope, and I know time is tough for you, Chip, but obviously there's a lot of questions, a lot of questions that were directed at you about the reserves, about the funds, about use of REIT to cover the general fund deficit. I'm hoping that you are gonna have time to respond.
Oh, yes.
In writing, the questions were captured, and I hope that you'll have time.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that's great, thanks.
And if I can add, I mean, there is a, there is a proposal by some members of the CAG, that is up on our website, that's available for anyone to see, you know, that's, it's a real legitimate option. I mean, and at the end of it, I didn't read it as, don't seek a levy. I think they're just saying, do these other things, and then maybe come back in 2020, is my, but that's available for anyone who wants to take a look at it.
Okay, moving on. Thrift shop. For those who've been on the council a little bit longer, you'll remember that this idea was conceived back in 2012. And it was really to help out the YFS fund, because the city had become responsible for funding 90% of the school counselors. The school district during the Great Recession had to cut back their funding from about 42% to $60,000 even, and that's where it's been stuck. And that was their call, that they had to make a hard decision. That put the burden on us, and at the same time, I also had to reduce general fund support for YFS during the Great Recession, for one, to 320, well, down from $400-plus thousand now to $320,000, then to $200,000, putting an additional burden on that. And so we thought, well, what if we can grow revenues in the thrift shop to make up the difference? And so we did a, we looked at a proposal, preliminary design, presented it to the council back in September of 2013, and it got shelved. And our timing wasn't exactly right, is that thrift shop revenue growth was leveling off in 2013, and that plan back then was to use thrift shop sales growth to pay the debt service. And then, as I mentioned before, general fund, and for the 13, 14 budget, I had to cut back support for YFS fund, and that just, it just killed it. I just couldn't make it work at that point. However, in the process of engaging the community in our financial challenges, it hasn't come from me, other people have asked, well, what about the thrift shop? What if you thought about growing sales? Well, that's, I then shared the story about, there was a vision a few years ago on this very thing. And the vision has changed, of what about if there's a way to have island residents support thrift shop expansion that would grow sales revenues to the point where we could eliminate the $400,000 contribution from the general fund to the YFS fund, thereby helping our deficit situation, but making sure that YFS is squared away? Well, that's kind of intriguing, right? So, the preliminary cost estimate, it's very preliminary, on expanding that space, and I don't have the square footage in my head, it was increasing the square footage by about 50%, if memory serves me, it may have been a hair more than that. You have several funding options here. And so one that we've, I've mentioned to the CAG, is you could add a thrift shop to a capital levy lift, a nine-year, whenever you do a capital levy lift and you issue bonds, you're limited to nine years. And so as I mentioned before, just like the fire station, the nine-year capital levy lift has simple majority approval, you could include a thrift shop as part of a mix of projects, and just to kind of give you a metric, if you added $100 a year, and this would be a separate levy lift, in addition, potentially, in addition to an operating levy lift, a separate capital levy lift, if people were willing to pay $100 a year for nine years, that would fund almost $10 million in capital projects. And so it's just to give people a sense, you know, and alternatively, you could do a 20-year bond levy. Again, requires supermajority approval, you could include the thrift shop as part of a mix of projects, $100 a year for 20 years buys you a little over $15 million in capital projects. And then finally, the one that Julie mentioned, it's one that kind of intrigues me, trying to be creative, is what if you took a six-year operating levy lift, and one of the options we presented the CAG, it's right at $254 a year. And if you added another $50 a year for six years to that, that would provide the funding you need to do the thrift shop renovation expansion. And so we're gonna revisit this option again with them on April 2nd, along with a bunch of other options for that matter, but it's just kind of an intriguing option. So you go from $254 to solve our operating challenges, okay, and add $50 on top of it, and that allows you to expand the thrift shop, and down the line, eliminate the $400,000 contribution from the general fund to YFS fund. It's kind of intriguing. So, staff recommendation is if, big if, underline, bold, if a capital levy lift is placed on the November 2018 ballot, include this project, okay? And again, we're gonna wait and see what the CAG recommends, if they may say, you know, prioritize, operating levy lift is the higher priority, capital, revisit it down the future. But let's say they are interested in capital levy lift, and maybe $100 a year, then there would be a stakeholder group forum to kind of vet the list of projects that staff has put together and prioritized, and bring that to Julie and ultimately to the council for you to decide and react to. But there's a bunch of ifs there, and we'll know more come April 2nd, based on the CAG's recommendation. If a capital levy lift is not placed on the ballot, you can do what I mentioned before, adding $50 to an operating levy lift, potentially, to provide funding for the thrift shop. That's my thinking. Does council agree with that approach, as it relates to the thrift shop?
I'm actually just gonna say, as a placeholder, respect for the CAG, is that there be a third bullet that says, if the CAG comes back and makes another recommendation, we would make sure that that came, obviously, to Julie and then to council, so that we would be aware, if they come up with some different variant? Because I just want to make sure I capture some of the great thinking that's going on.
That's actually what this is meant to reflect, it's tied directly to whatever they recommend, but these are the options that we're presenting to them.
Okay, so I just do a different wording then?
Absolutely.
So great. Council there?
Yep.
All right, super, good.
Okay. Finally, almost there, almost done. We have other capital projects, and this is part of this big capital project list, which the council's seen before, and we have distributed to the CAG as well, and we talked about three funding scenarios, which Julie already mentioned, just trying to frame things for them at $100, $125, or $150 a year for nine years, gets you anywhere between $10 and almost $15 million worth of capital project funding. The staff recommendation on this is, hey, we got a lot going on here, if there's any interest in funding these other non-utility capital projects, you know, they would be tied to a capital levy lift. And again, we rely on, have the CAG make a recommendation of whether they think thumbs up or thumbs down on this capital levy lift idea. So the alternative is, let's say, they say no, you know, and then what we're recommending is, well, the fire station levy lift will end in 2021, that would be the time to revisit the capital levy for capital projects. That's our thinking.
Council, any comment? All right, good, I think you got consensus.
I just wanted to say that I made the connection when he said that these are basically a list or menu of options for the CAG to consider, and that we aren't procedurally overruling what the CAG is looking at. So I feel a lot better about this conversation now.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here would intend to be running a parallel or supersede the work that the CAG's doing.
Finally, is there anything else the council wants to discuss or give direction to staff on at this point in time? Again, you'll have multiple bites at the apple. And just a reminder, June 19th, CIP preview, we tried to dedicate that meeting, because it's, you'll need a couple hours to kind of work your way through the CIP. We focus on really changes in the six-year CIP versus, the coming six-year CIP versus the current six-year CIP. But that's a big bite at the apple, also on November 6th and then November 20th.
My only question would be, were the CAG to be making a recommendation with regard to the CIP? Would that then come in, where would that slip into this?
Great question. So, Julie, you want to take it, or you want me to take it? Okay, so here's what's envisioned, and, you know, it's, I apologize, it's, Julie, I talked about this, it feels like we're kind of getting ahead of the council a little bit, and that's not the intention as we engage the CAG on this. But the timing looks like this, the CAG gives Julie her recommendation on April 2nd, right? And we also plan on conducting a biennial citizen survey in kind of that second half of April timeframe. And then we'll come to the council on May 15th with the biennial citizen survey results, the CAG recommendation, and present that information. In June, this is a recent change, the first meeting in June, we plan on Julie giving her recommendation to the council, okay? And that's when the council then reacts and says, go forth and put together a ballot measure, an ordinance, to place a ballot measure on the November ballot, and it's an operating and/or a capital levy lift or no, right? And so we'll wait to get your direction at June. We'll do the first reading, the second meeting in June, which is June 19th, just before, I think, school gets out, or right around when school gets out. Then the second reading would be in the first meeting in July. That's our thinking.
Leaving us an extra month in the event we hit any bumps there, because if I understand, it's the first week in August, when it would be our last possible date to approve.
Actually, that'd be too late. It's due early August to King County.
Before our first August meeting?
Yeah, before, and so we have the second meeting in July, if necessary.
Okay, Tom?
I don't know if this, it's sort of in the vein of giving a menu of options to the CAG members, but I asked Julie and Mayor Burtland about doing a carve-out for the councilors, and I'm wondering if that is an option that should be presented to the CAG as well with these other options.
Julie, you want to take that, or?
For the mental health councilors.
Actually, Councilmember Ackerman, the reason that wasn't proposed as an option is I'm really using the current council goal, number four, of maintaining service levels is kind of my overarching marching orders. So that scenario actually doesn't maintain existing service levels. It still would be a reduction of programs. So if we're looking at roughly about a $2 million deficit, our councilors, the general fund contribution there is about 400, so I'd have to still cut.
The general fund contribution is?
$400,000.
About 400.
Oh, that's right, because the other one's coming from YFS.
Roughly, so I'm, so if I'm correct, you're saying just carve out funding the school counselors, and right now, that general fund contribution is about 400, so I'm going out to voters just for that portion, and then I still would be, I mean, all of us would still be looking at program cuts in other areas. So which is why I had my marching orders from council of come up with a financial plan to maintain service levels. Now, part of this conversation out in the community is recognizing that it is a structural imbalance, it's that 1%. So at this point, do you want to maintain existing service levels? And if, let's assume that's yes, our, and we have been very transparent about this, we believe our solution is a levy lift, which is the whole point of 747, initiative 747. Now, if you want to do something different, and I do think Chip has some other revenue options, which we haven't yet talked with you, that, this is where I get nervous about getting too ahead of council. One revenue option, you might recall, is the utility tax that we'll sunset at the end of?
This year.
This year. Another possibility, actually came from a CAG member, was actually increasing the BNO, that's, that would generate some revenue. So there are some other things you could do council-matically without going out for a levy. So there's some options there.
Well, I think, I probably wasn't clear, I was just saying, doing a standalone levy for the councilors themselves, so that the community has an opportunity to vote for them when they aren't bundled with other packages, if you will, and then if they're funded through the levy, then you wouldn't have to use the funding that's in the, it would free up the money that's already in the budget for them.
I think what I'm hearing, Councilmember Ackerman say, is there would actually be two initiatives on the ballot, one would be school counselors, and then there would be one for everything else that the CAG came up with.
Oh, is that right?
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
Because otherwise, you wouldn't actually be maintaining level of service.
Correct.
If you didn't put the remaining delta, because if you say there's a $2 million deficit, the counselors, in the general fund, the counselors represent 400,000, that would still leave 1.6 million outstanding, that I think our city manager is saying that she would have to address somehow, some way, based on council direction when we started this whole process.
So you are actually saying you'd have Prop 1 and maybe a Prop 2?
Yeah, with everything that's going on, and it's not just limited to school counselors, it's our aging population and others, I just think our community puts a lot of value in those counseling services, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to get lost in a bigger package, potentially. So, and at the same time, if the community votes it into practice, it would also free up money that's in the existing budget. So I think it would be a win-win for the community, and that was just my philosophy in suggesting that earlier.
Well, and I think we'll have time to talk about, I think, the pros and cons of having multiple measures on the ballot when we, I guess, back, yeah, in May, on May 15th is when we begin to really get into deeper conversations with you about it.
Yeah, I just thought, the purpose of this presentation is to give the CAG some options to look at and evaluate in their discussions, and that was just another option that was out there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I haven't really heard too many other different options, but from now to the next meeting, we could hear others.
That's it?
Bruce has a question.
See, a couple things. First, I would want to be clear, I don't think we've given staff direction here to direct CAG to consider breakout levies. If you feel like you've gotten that, we would need to have the council as a whole weigh in on that before you took that.
No, it was more if I heard CAG members express that, I'd bring that back to you.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Second, Chip, you mentioned the, I think in your sequencing of things, that the first July meeting ended up being a significant milestone in the decision to go to the voters. The concern I would have is that we've talked about moving that first July meeting, which falls in the July 4th week, and haven't, as far as I know, settled on when it's gonna happen. So I wouldn't want you to be caught unawares, because that meeting's gone off into a different place in the schedule and is messing.
Not a problem, because there's the potential it might move forward, we've talked about, to the end of June, or move back, either works.
I think, did we, I didn't actually look at that on the planning calendar, but I think it's the 26th of June. Yeah, but Julie, are you here?
Yeah, I'm not, but Chip will be here.
I'll be here.
And then the other potential date I know that we looked at was July 10th, which I won't be here either.
Okay, so what I'm sensing is then, maybe Chip and Julie, if you and staff could put your heads together, because I'd like to counsel, my general reaction is I feel it'd be very important to have the finance director and the city manager for a discussion of that substance.
I know when Chip and I talked, we're really trying to be sensitive, I mean, having had my first summer here last year, the town kind of clears out. So to get the public input before the school lets out is kind of what we were targeting initially, so we're really trying to look at by at least mid-June to get you all to make a decision, just because we'd want public to weigh in on that before you all decide. And so I'm hesitant to push out really beyond that, but it is there as a potential option, if you need it. And we may just have to look at different dates than a Tuesday night and a special meeting or something like that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, my reaction is just, if we use past practices as a predictor, these often take more time than we anticipate, or there's a lot more discussion than we might have anticipated, and the extent to which council would be willing to consider an additional session focused purely on that, maybe we should keep that tentatively in our minds.
And probably wise to flag that.
Good catch.
As long as we're exploring every option. I think I read in here, we can cut our REIT rate in half and then use REIT for operating, is that right?
Yeah, I didn't put it in the agenda bill, did I?
Well, I think you referenced others.
I did mention, yeah, I'm still exploring this, there is, this came up through the CAG on Saturday, basically, where you, there's an option where you can take a half percent of your REIT and dedicate it to operating. option where you can take a half percent of your REIT and dedicate it to operating. There's only, however, that only works if you're not taking the full 1% of sales tax. And so we'd have to give back our, cut our sales tax rate in half. And I, there's only two tiny cities that I've never even heard of taking advantage of this, because it makes more sense for them to rely on that half percent of REIT for fun operations than that additional half percent of sales tax. We're still looking into it.
Okay. I had interest in seeing what that economics of that...
Yeah, we do too.
Okay, good. Last thing was, in terms of things like landslides, and then maybe the landslide is caused by a water issue, and that takes out a sewer, do we have a cross-fund way to make the other fund whole? Is that accounted for anywhere? And then, second question is, when we have something like the East or West Mercer Way shoulders, you know, small landslides, are we building contingencies in for that, that when we do a shoulder expansion, have some sort of reserve fund that says, when this falls down, use this money to pay for it?
No, we don't have any reserves for those kind of things.
Okay.
We do, we have water and sewer reserves. Ideally, I would agree. Absolutely.
As you step through that, would you just start building that into the cost of big capital projects? Say, I want to widen the shoulder for a mile, I'm going to reserve X percent for when it falls down? And how would you do that mechanically? I'm trying to understand that, you know, in terms of these capital projects moving forward, if you build in some failure rate, then you just put some component on top of the project, right?
Yeah, here's my challenge. I like the thinking, obviously. The challenge is, the capital funding we have, forget about utilities, that we have is not enough to meet the demand for capital projects.
Sure.
And so it's like, you know, if I were to do that, that takes money away from something else. And so it's just finding that right balance with the council, ultimately.
And so the last question is, did I hear that the water meter replacement is spending $3 million a year, and sewer replacement is spending 1.3 million a year? Like roughly more than double?
No, it's not 3 million. It's, yeah, it's much smaller on the water meters. J.C. Kent, Public Works Director, so let me just go back to the emergency question first of all. So on the sewer side, we do have about $100,000 aside for an emergency fund. As we experienced last year with a lot of emergencies, that doesn't cut it. And so there are reserves within the capital funds. And oftentimes, when those emergencies happens, we have to readjust our work plan. And so sometimes, projects that we originally outlined to get done in that, that year don't happen just because of the circumstances. As far as the meter plan goes, we are currently, I don't have the number fresh in my head, but right now, we have a number of outdated water meters in our system. Our previous approach didn't really necessarily have a rhyme or reason to how we were going about replacement of those meters. And so we are underway on a meter master plan to identify, you know, what's the age of our meters, what's our replacement rate, what type of technology should or should not be used through that meter master program. That's currently underway, should finish up this year, and we'll have a better recommendation in terms of what that replacement rate will be in the future. There's a couple of different flavors of how you approach it, whether or not you do one robust meter replacement, or whether you spear it across multiple years. That's still to be determined as part of this program.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
That was great. Counsel, we have one more item of business on our agenda, which I might be cautiously optimistic and think won't be too confusing, convoluted, or debated, but it may well be if two weeks ago was any indication. So with that, do you want to take a break, or do you want to jump right in? It's boards and commissions. And Ally's asking for a timeout?
I have to get my power back now. See, man, I'll take a quick break.
Okay. So I think we're going to go ahead, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break then. Thanks.
With the questions I asked in the planning session, it sounds like some of you have some secrets about the methodology of the project. Why is there...
My eyes are watering.
Are yours too, Tom? They're just, I can't see anything. I'm going to blame it on the air in the room.
Allergies to people.
You doing anything else? Go ahead and try.
Three weeks.
How's the economic?
The trade is slowing down because of the... Maybe ours want to... Did they respond to the latest thing?
They know what posturing's all about.
I read you're late. Are yours too, Tom? They're just, I can't see anything. I'm going to blame it on the air in the room.
Allergies to people.
You doing anything else? Go ahead and try.
Three weeks.
How's the economic?
The trade is slowing down because of the... That's why they're responding. Maybe ours want to... Did they respond to the latest thing? No.
They know what posturing's all about.
Yeah. I read you're late. Huh? Usually packing up for going right now. This is exciting. I thought you were supposed to be getting some stuff. I thought it was... Look at Chip.
Okay, so council's back after short recess. And our next item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5399, review charter for boards and commissions appointment process ad hoc committee. So welcome, Ally Speets.
Thank you.
She, Ally's...
She pumped it to me. Yeah, we co-wrote it, so, but, so for the record, I'm Ally Clerk. Ally Clerk, your city speets. It's been a long week already. It's only Tuesday. Let's try that again. I'm Ally Speets, your city clerk. And I am here tonight presenting the charter for the Boards and Commission Appointment Process Ad hoc Committee. So your agenda bill has the history of how we formed, as the charter does also. So tonight, we're asking the council to review and approve the proposed ad hoc committee charter, and then also provide feedback on the draft appointment and selection process, draft application form and cover page, and the request from the committee to expand the scope and charter of the committee. So the proposed committee charter has a problem statement, and also recommends a process for selecting and appointing Design Commission, Planning Commission, Utility Board members to the full council for its review and action. That is the action, that is the purpose of the committee. And then it just also noted that the committee will sunset after a recommendation is made to the full council unless it's extended by the full council. There is a request from the committee to expand the charter, expand the scope of what the committee is reviewing. So the, there is an application form and a process flow that we added to the agenda bill. We revised the agenda bill, which we emailed out to you and to everyone on the agenda email list. So the committee would like to revise the application form and cover page. The cover page also details out what the process is. The committee would also like to develop membership criteria for the Planning Commission, Design Commission, and Utility Board. That kind of parallels the, those are the three boards, that part of the original charter. And then also develop membership criteria for the Arts Council, Community Services Board, and the Open Space Conservancy Trust. The committee would like to also propose amendments to all of the, to the code for all the boards and commissions for consistency. They were all drafted at very different times, and so there isn't the same information in each one of the code sections. And then the committee would also like to discuss and recommend to the full council the responses to the following questions of, do we have the right boards and commissions? Do we need additional boards? For example, a Parks Board, a Transportation Board? And do we need a sunset any boards and commissions? This is the proposed appointment process for the Planning Commission, Design Commission, and Utility Board positions. I'm happy to come back to this. If there's questions, I just want to get through, and then we can, you guys can ask your questions. The draft revised application form has the cover page, which talks about what applicant requirements are, application process, and the appointment process. And the new form also requests a resume and a LinkedIn URL, and asks the applicant to identify any financial interest, employee, or office or business within the city, and identify any conflicts of interest, and certify that all the information is true and correct. So, again, tonight, review and approve the proposed charter, and then provide feedback on the application selection, form and cover page, and the request to expand the scope. And then there's some proposed next steps. So I'm going to stop right here and answer questions that you have about what I have presented on so far, and then I'll work with the mayor to figure out how we do the next steps.
Counsel, is there any questions? Celine?
I just want to ask staff on the expansion of the scope, some of these things are out of sequence with things like the ethics, right? There's a dependency here that's bumping into that. Is this causing the sequencing of other work to get out of order and reprioritize? Because this is, if we approve this tonight?
Other work outside of boards and commission?
What I, my thought is, is that we, we thought this was going to be simple, and we thought we were going to have a quick win, right? That we could go implement. If it bumps into something like the council needing an ethics statement for boards, and then maybe a removal procedure for a board or commission. They can go ahead and draft a procedure, but then you can't implement it until you have something else. And I'll call that a dependency.
Right. So the code of ethics is something that's been on our work plan to do, and it's going to happen pretty soon. So it's, regardless of when that happens, there is still some work with this that needs to be done. Part of the need to address the code for boards and commission is staff-driven. There are inconsistencies that make it difficult when we're trying to explain or reason the way, the different ways that things are happening. So even regardless of this entire committee, I would still recommend changes to our code so that we can have some consistency among all the boards and commissions. Whether or not this work takes the place or bumps something else out, you know, it's, there's, it's, it's not a lot to change the code. We have a draft of the application there. So I think there are things that we'll continue to change and evolve, like once we get the code of ethics put into place, then we would change the application to include that information. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a follow-up clarifying. What are the inconsistencies that staff has seen? What are the inconsistencies that need to be, well, arguably prioritized?
So one of them is term limits. Only one of our, one board, which is the Design Commission, has term limits. And that means that we could have somebody serve on our Utility Board for forever, if they wanted to, and if they were reappointed that many times. There is no limit to how long they can be a member on that board. Now, we may decide that that's fine, but we want to look at it and decide, do we need to institute term limits? There are removal provisions in half of the Boards and Commissions codes and not in the others. And the ones that are in there are all different. Some have to be removed for cause, some can be removed by the mayor for any, for no reason, any reason. So I think the point in this was that the committee wanted to kind of propose some standards for term limits and removal of members and that kind of thing, so that it's a little bit more clear. When you go and look at the Design Commission, there are three sections for the code. When you go look at the Planning Commission, there are 12. So there's 12 different factors for Planning Commission members, but only three for Design Commission members. Yet the Design Commission is the more strict requirements for membership. So it's just imbalanced.
Okay. So it's term limits and then the removal clauses? Those are the two main...
Yeah. Those are the main things for consistency. And we probably would add sections in, like saying which boards and commissions have staff liaisons, which boards and commissions have council liaisons. You know, just kind of create some consistency in the membership section of the boards and commissions.
Okay. Counsel, Benson?
You know, I know, I know people always, rightfully so, have concern about putting more things on the plates of the staff. And so I guess, to you, Ally, and also to our city manager, this is somewhat of a new, wasn't really planned. I mean, it was planned, but it has sort of expanded. And so the question is, is it something that you guys feel that you can handle with all the other things that are on your plate without, I know there's concerns about pushing other priority items down, but I'm just kind of curious whether or not you folks feel that you can handle this along with all the...
You mean the full expanded scope?
Well, yeah, to extend that, you know, if this council decides to approve that.
It is one of the action steps identified in your council goals. So if it's a council priority, we will make it happen. I think ultimately, we want to make sure, I know for myself, I feel code of ethics is a high priority, and we do believe we can get that, really, we think we can more or less get that accomplished in the first six months of this year. That's one that I know is tied to this a little bit. I think there are also, from the staff perspective, some areas where we'd like to address some problems that do exist, especially around, say, members' absences and that sort of thing. We do have some boards and commissions that have some real work that they actually have to do. And so we do have challenges with gaining quorum at times. And so we want to address and fix those problems. I think those are a priority to make sure we fix.
And I think the other difficult thing is that we're running up against a timeline here. I need to open recruitment for boards and commissions. And so I don't have any, I don't have a, I don't believe that we'll be able to make the majority of these changes in time for the appointment process.
This year?
Yeah, the terms expire May 31st. So I wouldn't say that, that, you know, out of all of this, the application process, the application, if that, if the council desires for that to be different, that would be the thing I would need feedback on if we're going to have a new application that goes out.
I think those are a priority to make sure we fix.
And I, I think the other difficult thing is that we're running up against a timeline here. Um, I need to open recruitment for boards and commissions. And so I don't have any, um, I don't have a, I don't believe that we'll be able to make the majority of these, um, changes in time for the appointment process.
This year?
Yeah, the terms expire May 31st. So, I, I wouldn't say that, that, you know, out of all of this, the application process, the application, if that, if the council desires for that to be different, that would be the thing I would need feedback on if we're going to have a new application that goes out. Um, and then, of course, the process, um, for how we're, how appointments are made. And, um, we're kind of cart before the horse or horse before the cart tonight because we don't have an actual, um, narrative recommendation for you about the process that the committee has been discussing. All we have is what is in here. And that leaves a lot of questions, I know, for council. So, um, I, you know, this, I based this timeline off of this year. And as you can see, the dates in here. Um, we usually recruit for six weeks. So, we may be limiting ourselves. Um, when it comes to the code provisions, I know that they won't probably be fully implemented by the time that the application needs to go out next week. So that's kind of where we, where we're gonna have to just kind of make the changes and work on it next year. Well, work on it this year and implement them next year.
I've got another question, but council, I want to give other people a chance. Okay, I'm gonna jump in then. Um, the, if you could go back to your, the lists, yeah. So if you look at point number five. Julie, in our planning session that we had, my understanding was that this was going to be a full council discussion item at the mini-planning session. Is that consistent with what you had understood as well?
Yes, I think I wanted to initially have the conversation with the full council around this. Um, you know, but this is a proposal by the ad hoc committee to have you delegate that to them and bring back a proposal for your review. Uh, we haven't really talked about whether or not that could be aligned for the, I think it's June 9, June 9th planning session. But it, it's possible we could have that, a proposal drafted up for your review by then. But initially, my original intent was to have a full discussion with all seven of you.
Okay, thanks. So, anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, if there's no more clarifying questions, I mean, obviously Ally and Julie are still here, but to move this conversation forward, I think we would need a motion to debate in order to move forward in our conversation. Is there a motion?
Mic, microphone, please.
We'll forget that. I move to approve Agenda Bill 5399.
Do you want to go to the recommended motion on page three?
Oh.
There you go.
Sure. I move to adopt the proposed charter for Boards and Commissions Appointee Process Ad Hoc Committee.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second discussion.
So, I, I think my first comment on this is a, uh, to thank our subcommittee members for their enthusiasm on this. Um, because they clearly have, have jumped in, uh, to deep water, you know, rather than wading into the process of, of addressing the questions that were, that were raised at the planning session. So, uh, kudos to you for that. However, as I mentioned to you in my, uh, email that went out to all of you today, I, at least, envisioned the task you were taking on, um, as a much smaller one and thought that was the right scoping for this. Uh, and feel, uh, sort of, I think disappointed is the word I use there, that, that has, that has, this has expanded in the way it has and turned into something that, that first, I think, council, um, hadn't envisioned at the time. Um, and that has then, um, become a bit of a, a many-tentacled thing that, that is consuming staff time and starts to really impinge on our ability to have the recruiting process occur on the schedule that, uh, it needs to occur on. Um, what I would like to see us do is actually just go back to the original problem statement, which is that there is a concern about, uh, what the process is and the sense that the, the mayor might be, uh, controlling that. Uh, and make the changes that I had, uh, suggested to you in, um, in the steps. And it's, it's change, changes to step seven, eight, and nine, I believe, uh, with minor edits. And when I, when I, um, printed that out, it unfortunately came out in a way that I can only read a little bit of. But, um, make those changes rather than adopting a, uh, charter and going back to doing yet more work on this. So, I, I guess I'm not even quite sure now that we have a motion to adopt the charter. Uh, I mean, actually, what I would suggest is, it, it, my preference would be that we, um, agree not to adopt a charter and rather than simply take these steps, uh, now, call this good for right now and to the extent that's, and, and I want to be fully respectful of staff's concern that we have, uh, some, some fundamental problems that do need to get fixed. But I would suggest that we, as council, could say, "Staff, just go, uh, work on that, bring it back to us." In the same way that we ask staff to go and work on many other things and bring those back to us, rather than having a subcommittee, uh, to try and, and wrangle those things. And I'll, I'll make a few points along the way to, towards, towards this. So the first is, um, Ally is without an assistant at this point. So her time is even more valuable than it always is. Um, and she, from my six years of experience as mayor, has a heavy, uh, role in just pulling all of this in. The assistant has a heavy role in pulling all of these applications together and making all of this come together in a way that, that works well. So to further compound or complicate that process is to put a lot more weight on her shoulders. That's one. Two, um, I've looked at the proposed application and I'm, I'm actually a little bit distressed that I see what looks like a much, uh, a, a significantly more onerous application. Uh, and, at, what, what I've seen in the past and, um, is that we have a hard time attracting enough folks to all of the different roles we have. We, we've, uh, at times had too few people, people to fill the roles and we've had to go back out and recruit more. So for us to now say, you know, not only do you need to do the application, but we want to see a resume with that, uh, is to make the, the experience for our citizens harder and it's going to reduce the number of people we have applying. Uh, second point. I, I've, in you, reading the, the, the statement that's on our webpage and the existing application versus the new application, I quite frankly think there are some things in the new application that are unclear. Uh, there's a reference to groups, for instance. Uh, but there's no definition of what groups are. There's, uh, a reference, there's a, a need for a, uh, applicant to, um, describe whether they have a conflict of interest. But there's nothing there that, that helps that person to understand what, what does it mean to have a conflict of interest? So, there's, there's, uh, going to be difficulty for them in figuring that out. These are all things that could be worked out if we had the, the, uh, sense that we wanted to spend the time through a series of meetings to review it all. But we don't have the time to accomplish that when Ally's already talking about compressing the, uh, the recruitment cycle because of these additional features that, that are being proposed to be put into this. So I think we, we're putting ourselves into a box where we're complicating something that needed really minor tweaks to, to be, uh, responsive to the, to the initial concern that was raised. And instead, we're, we're creating something that's, that's both complicated and has some flaws to it that I think would take time to, to get worked out. Uh, and for those reasons, I, I would, again, suggest that making some minimal changes, the ones I've, I've suggested or if, if, you know, people have other, uh, similar slight changes that they'd like to make, by all means, I'm happy to discuss those. But I'd like to try and contemplate getting back to that level rather than this, this larger, um, effort that, that seems to have gotten underway, um, with, you know, and, again, the enthusiasm of our subcommittee. I'll stop there. My, my, I guess my, my final point is simply, um, I'm gonna vote against the charter and then if, if we get there or some, somehow land in a different spot, I will propose making these more minor changes and then letting us talk about a path forward that, that achieves some of the other ends which staff has said they need to, to achieve.
Um, for our... Are you responding to Bruce or do you?
Both, actually.
Okay.
So, um, so for our public at home watching, and because I had 12 seconds to look at your email, could you just clarify what changes you want to ma, made to point seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah, no, thank you.
And then I want to address the complicated pieces that you brought up.
Sure, thank you.
So first, tell me what you're talking about specifically and then let's get into the detail.
Yeah, so, um, 10-step process that staff laid out for going all the way from advertising to final council, uh, or to, to actually sending out the final letters at the end of the process. Yeah, so, and I, what I proposed was that, uh, step seven, which is, um, had read, "The mayor reviews the application, staff liaison recommendations, and council recommendations, and forwards appointment decisions to the city clerk." If we take the, were decisions out and put in the word recommendations to the city clerk, because what I'm trying to do is make it very clear that the, the mayor does not make these appointments at the end of the day. The mayor recommends to the council, the council makes the decision. Um, because I think the perception was that the mayor was making the decision. This, uh, then in item eight, um, I, I would substitute the word mayor's choice with the word recommendations. So it's the mayor's recommendations rather than the mayor, the word mayor's choice. And in item nine, and thank you for, Ally, are you the editor here? Thank you very for doing that. And in item nine, uh, "At the next council meeting, the council confirms or modifies the mayor's," and I would scratch the word "choice" and instead put in "recommendation." Oh, I'm sorry, "confirms or modifies." Uh, so it's, yeah, "confirms or modify." So I'm adding the word "or," modi, two words, "or modifies" the mayor's recommendation to make it, again, clear that this is not the mayor... Because I, I think the language was confusing before. It, it essentially said the mayor decides, but then the council is obliged to rubber stamp that. And in fact, in the language, I was a little bit surprised that in the language that was proposed by the subcommittee, it had the, the sub, subcommittee, a, a different subcommittee, the, a subcommittee that selects applicants, essentially deciding, and then the council rubber stamping. And I, I want to really get away from this concept of rubber stamping that, uh, is, I, I think, at the heart of the concern. So that's what this, these three, uh, change, the changes to seven, eight, and nine are intended to accomplish. Back to you.
So I'm gonna keep going and say, when the mayor puts the recommendation or choice forward at this point, um, I'm not likely to question how the process was. I know from my last two years of making recommendations to the mayor, to staff, to staff liaisons, to the mayor, my selections, I never got a response. I didn't know if that recommendation was considered. Uh, I'm going back to the charter now for the optics and the lack of transparency. So, so my enthusiasm on this committee is to try to clarify how that decision gets made and how those appointments happen. Because once we have a name put forward in this forum, I'm the last person that's gonna step forward and say, why this person, not that person? When it had been weeks or months when I first saw the initial list of applicants, maybe. And, um, so my interest in, in sort of pursuing this work and working with the subcommittee now over two meetings and multiple emails was to, to clarify, um, kind of the basic standards. And if our applicants don't have a resume at this point in their lives, I don't think that's too much to ask as part of the process for filling out an application and attaching a resume to help us kind of understand their interest, enthusiasm, and professional experience for serving on a board. Um, I also think that, um, conflicts of interest, while that's a vague term, if you own some property and you're getting on the Planning Commission, it stands to reason that you might think that would be a conflict of interest. Whether it is or not, it's something that maybe should be made aware earlier on than when you're already on the commission and there's some question raised along the way that you might have a conflict of interest. So, so my enthusiasm for that is just to make any potential or perceived self-interest, whether you think it or not, maybe just put it on the application and talk about it as part of the application process. So, I get that staff are overwhelmed and overworked. We have a lot to do and we're running up to a timeframe here. At the very least, I think we should get to this code of conduct and ethics sooner rather than later. But I also think this committee has put in a lot of work and I think at our Planning Commission, it wasn't super clear that we just wanted to change a few edits. I think we really kind of wanted to take an initial deep dive and look at how that process works. So whether it's a subcommittee or whether it's a more robust system on the backend for the mayor to make the recommendation, I think it would help the system and help the optics for our public to have a few more council voices in the selection process somewhere other than an email recommendation to the three or four people involved in the recommendation before it gets to council.
Celine?
Maybe, the subcommittee can help me understand, but at the planning session, we talked about this process changing for three boards or commissions. And so when I read, you know, the 10 bullet points, are these 10 bullet points that distinctly describe a process related to just those three boards and commissions? And is this application, the application that only applies to those three? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what we're proposing in the 10 right now. A distinct flow for the three boards and commissions or across all?
The 10, the numbers 10, that's the current process.
That's the current process. Okay.
The beginning of the Agenda Bill, that's what's up on the screen. That's what we currently do.
And what Bruce is saying is...
So Bruce is saying we can, we can do what we set out to do by making those edits.
Rather than doing what the ad hoc committee is recommending.
Okay.
Yeah, Benson?
Yeah, you know, I get, I get the, uh, I understand the comments. Um, I would say that when we did meet, that the focus was on, obviously, on the three, the Plan Commission, Design Commission, and the Utility Board. I think during the course of the discussion, um, a lot, a lot of the things that were discussed seemed to be applicable or could be applicable to other committees. Okay, so, I, I think, um, so that's part of the question about the expansion. Okay, because some of the things that we did discuss seemed to apply to other committees. So that was kind of a natural, um, uh, transition. We're also very mindful of the fact that Ally has to deal with an actual process to get, um, recruits or go through this nomination process, uh, this month. And so, you know, you'll see in the, uh, diagram or the flow chart that was, uh, presented, that's intended to try to address the current situation now and to fit it within the current timeframe. Um, I, I would say that, you know, obviously, the expansion of the, potential expansion of the, uh, scope of the, uh, ad hoc committee, that's something that obviously the full board, a full council has to approve. And a lot of the work that is envisioned, um, won't be, won't happen, uh, for, uh, you know, a short period of time. I mean, I think, uh, that's the question. I think the, the ad hoc committee is willing to continue to work and to bring back recommendations to the full council. Nothing gets done, obviously, without, uh, having everything come back to the full council for review. But I, but I do think that the process, based upon some of the things that Julie was able to show us, other, uh, cities have a more robust process than we do. And I think that's sort of the direction that members of the ad hoc committee were wanting to move towards, okay? But we recognize the fact that we face this month having to deal with an actual process now that, uh, is not going to perhaps encompass all the changes that the full council might ultimately adopt. So we're kind of in an awkward transition phase right now. But, um, you know, with respect to, one last comment, with respect to the application form, a lot of the things that you see, we got feedback, I think, and I, if, if I misspeak or mischaracterize the staff, you know, tell me. But a lot of the things that were on the application form, I think, received some positive feedback or responses from the staff as well. Uh, it's not perfect. And I, I think your point about the conflict of interest is a good one, Bruce. Um, who knows what that means unless you have a definition. But it's also, I think, respectful of Ally trying to, trying to keep the application form as simple as possible. And the last thing, I know we've had this discussion or comments regarding the resume. I think the application form says it's recommended. But of course, as you say, not everybody's gonna have a resume. But certainly, uh, if you don't provide a resume or you don't, you know, provide other information, it'll probably negatively impact, potentially negatively impact your application review. I mean, I, obviously, the more information you can provide tends to be better for the review process, so.
Tom, and then I'm gonna take... Tom, and then I'm going to take a turn.
Yeah, I just, I'm disappointed that Bruce is disappointed, mostly because that means we didn't do a good job of communicating with you, Bruce. And I think perhaps in the spirit of trying to move this forward, we can take the comments that you have under advisement with our ad hoc committee and look at maybe incorporating them, and that would make you feel more comfortable. As far as staff time, we talked a lot about that, and Ali and Julie and the department heads, I've never known them, not to push back on us. So if we asked for anything unreasonable, I hope they feel comfortable to push back against Wendy Benson and myself. But a lot of the ideas and the concepts, the staff brought to us. I mean, if you streamline a process and you make it fair, open, and consistent, there are benefits to the community, to the city, to the staff. One of the comments that you made is attracting people is hard. And I would submit, perhaps it's hard because there's a perception that the process hasn't been open or fair. So I think this could be a real win for the community, it'd be a real win for the council. And I think that when I look at it, in how much effort Julie and staff and a paid consultant put into finding CAG members, we should perhaps go through the same due diligence with the people that are going to be setting policy and code and make sure that they have the subject matter expertise to serve on our committee. So that's sort of where I'm coming from, but I think we had really good discourse with the department heads. Wendy and Benson did a really good job of being very thorough in reviewing it, and hopefully this will simplify it for everyone.
Okay, I'm going to take a turn here. Again, you know, my, I think everybody's in here with best intentions, and I think that's important to reiterate at this point. I'm a pragmatist, and I'm recognizing that we are up against some deadlines in terms of the recruiting process that we have in front of us. When we went into this, I can tell you, my basic assumption was that the assessment was going to be from the point of intake on, meaning not the application process, but once an application had arrived, quote unquote, you know, in Ali's inbox or on her desk, et cetera. So that was one of my original assumptions. I'm going to suggest that we focus on the process first and foremost, once it is inside City Hall, and that we focus on that process so that we make sure this current year, we have sufficient time and resources to get the recruitment process started and completed along with expiration of terms on May 31st. So what does that mean explicitly? What that means is, I think, again, we should focus our assessment on whether it's the amendments that Bruce has made, I'm one through 10, basically on those steps, one through 10. The next thing that I would suggest and recommend and confirm, actually, from the subcommittee, is that it be extended to all committees, boards and commissions. I don't have a problem with this being part of the arts council process, part of, I'm having a brain moment, but all the other boards and commissions in addition to those three. I'm good with that. I'm also pleased, you know, that staff has spent the time and seized the opportunity here to smooth or rectify some of the inconsistencies that we have in code. If we can do that and clean that up for this year, I think that's super, and I certainly would not want to stand in the way of staff's recommendation in that sense. Let me tell you why I have some concerns about the rest of it, not because of the substance of them, but as much because of the time and I think some of the robust debate and discussion that they warrant. The first one, if you look, for example, at the application that's been drafted, I don't know whether or not this element, length of residency, has always been on the application or not. It has. I would actually argue that that should be struck.
I can actually...
I'm not, I don't want to get into the detail of it. But my point is, is, you know, I think we all want to spend more time on this application and ask, are they the right questions? To me, whether you've been here six days, six years, or 60 years, that you should be equally eligible to be on a board and commission. You are a Mercer Island resident. So that would just be one example where I feel that the application process itself warrants more time in discussion by council as a whole. The other element that is in here alludes to, or goes back to actually what Bruce raised, and that is a sense of inclusiveness. I had some conversations trying to understand more specifically what was meant by establishing criteria for the other boards and commissions. In my mind, you know, whether you have a specific professional background or not in something, that shouldn't preclude you. My hope is that people are interested and passionate, whether their resume supports or substantiates a background in arts or utilities or design or planning, that there would still be an open and welcome environment for you to go ahead and apply for nearly any board on the island. So I was a little bit uncomfortable with that. There's a reference to LinkedIn, and I think LinkedIn is also largely a generational tool. I have to be quite frank in terms of having conversations and even, I've searched, you know, for people that I know in this community on LinkedIn that are, you know, quite well-known to us, and they don't have a LinkedIn profile. So again, LinkedIn was another just minor example. So with that said, what I would urge council right now to do is to focus on what needs to be done to ensure that we can launch this program or this process. Make it robust for this year, and then secondarily, come back to the issues, the additional issues that the subcommittee has recommended and worked through them tonight. But I want to just make sure we get done what we need to get done for the boards and commissions for 2018, 19. So that was long-winded.
Just a point of order.
Sorry, Bruce had his hand up.
Don't we have to, I heard Bruce make a proposal, and I heard you make a recommendation too, but just a point of order, don't, there's a motion on the floor, don't we?
It's still being discussed. Yes, so we'll go Bruce and then Tom, or unless that was...
Well, excuse me, just again, a point of order. It's a best practice to have everyone speak at least once before people speak twice. So if everyone...
I think everybody's spoken once.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, sorry, a couple of different points. First, I'm a bit echoing Debbie's point, but the comment was made that, well, everyone should have a resume, but I would disagree. I think we're trying to as much attract a Myra Lupton to a board as somebody who is a young professional. And while Myra may well have a resume, in fact, she probably does, there...
An impressive one, no less.
No, she certainly does have an impressive resume. But there are certainly folks who don't fit the young professional mold who we would love to see present on our boards and commissions. And so, and even more so with the LinkedIn reference. So I think I'd love to have us have a longer and more involved conversation about what these requirements, whether these requirements really are reasonable or not as we're going there. Second, I'll again point out, so I took, I looked at the language on the website about applying to boards and commissions, and I compared that to the language that is in the agenda bill, is page six of the agenda bill. I much prefer the language that's on the website as being welcoming at a first pass and not having some, a number of things that sort of beg questions for me in what's on page six. And I'll point out a few. The first being, it says candidates must be current resident, I mean, under application requirements. Candidates must be current residents of Mercer Island for at least one year unless otherwise specified, planning commission and design commission. But then there's nothing to tell me what that is, and so I'm left just scratching my head at that point. The next sentence, "In addition to applicants meeting the criteria and/or qualifications, will be strongly considered for appointment." That felt like sort of odd statement because it seemed to imply that, what, I'm not going to be considered? Because why am I applying if I'm not going to be considered? Next sentence, "Applicants who meet the above requirements should submit an application form PDF," which leaves me going, wait, I have to be able to create a PDF to do this? Because I may not know how to do that. Next sentence, "You may submit applications for specific groups, whether or not there are current vacancies or expiring positions." But there's no definition of specific group, so I don't, I don't know what I'm, what this means. And my point in all of that, and there are a number of other things down below, but my point in all of that is that I just think this is not ready for prime time, and we have a short window of opportunity to get this live. And so I would want this to get vetted more fully if we were going to go down this path before we, before we went live with it and not have it sort of happen without the council being involved. So there's that. And then finally, and I think this is actually a big one that we're not talking about yet, but this, this refers to a subcommittee making these recommendations. What subcommittee? We don't have that subcommittee. Who's appointing to that subcommittee? Because it's going to become very political wanting to be on that subcommittee. It's not the same as the ad hoc subcommittee, unless the ad hoc subcommittee thinks it is, but that would be another sort of expansion of its authority beyond what was assigned. So, and then finally, I saw there's a reference to it, "Expect to be interviewed." And Ali, can you help me just, how many applicants do we typically get? I mean, I know we, you know, we've talked about, I've talked about the fact that we don't oftentimes are short of applicants, but it's still a lot of people.
Yeah, it's hard for me to know because I've kind of been out of the loop the last few years, but it's, I mean, we at least get 40 applications.
So we're talking about a subcommittee having something like 40 interviews on a compressed timeframe, and that subcommittee, we haven't even defined how we're going to select that subcommittee, much less select it, much less talk about what its schedule is going to be, and it's going to have to connect with all of these different people as well as have its own time to do that. So again, I'm just making the point that I think we've bitten off more than we ought to be chewing right now, and I would recommend that we set aside this path that we're on for the moment. We can certainly have a deeper conver, there's certainly some things we've got to get done. What I put up there is one, what staff's recommending is more. Call it a, call it a staff, some more staff work to be done in advance of the mini-planning session, bring it back there to us with some of the cleanups that have to be done, but let's, let's set this aside for right now.
Benson, then Wendy?
Yeah, I guess just a couple of things. I mean, a lot of the questions that you raised, Bruce, I just want to assure the rest of the council that those questions were actually discussed by members of the ad hoc committee. The issue about, you know, and again, it's not this idea of this, this committee that's identified on this flow chart making, the idea was that, yes, instead of the mayor making recommendations, it would be this slightly larger group, you know, three council members making this, making a recommendation to the full committee. And it was, we did talk about the fact that, yeah, there is no committee formed. Who's going to be on that committee? Those are questions that were raised. I just want to make sure that, that people understand that a lot of the questions that you're raising were actually discussed. And the generational thing with LinkedIn, that was also raised, you know, so it, I would agree that perhaps, you know, there's a lot of questions on the application form that probably need to be, need to be looked at. I would, and then to your point regarding the interviewing, we talked about that, there was a feeling among the members of the ad hoc committee plus staff, excuse me, staff, that obviously it's not, it's impractical to interview everybody. So basically, the idea is that, you know, the applications would be vetted, they would be reviewed, and perhaps only the top two, top three people who rise to the top, those would be interviewed. And interviews are not going to be necessarily mandatory. I mean, again, I just want to assure that, you know, we were not simply, that we were thinking about this process in great detail. And I, you know, I understand, we are kind of pressed against the clock, or, so I understand that that's causing a lot of concern. And so, you know, I'm not exactly sure where you end at this point, and honestly, Ali needs to have direction, and so, you know.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest that we go through the last round of comments, and then we figure out, to your point, where we go from there. So Wendy, then Tom, and then...
Okay, on the one hand, I'm hearing we're going to stay at the policy level, on the other hand, I'm hearing we're going to wordsmith both the cover letter and the application. So I'm going to just cut to the chase and not get into process and not get into what could be months of discussion and just add on to Bruce's edits for one through 10. And anywhere there's a mayor, we add the deputy mayor. Because at the very least, I'd like the two of you to review the recommendations that the rest of the council put forward and that staff puts forward. So at least, however that decision gets done, that the rest of us don't see when the recommendation comes before us, at least two of us have seen all the recommendations. So one through 10, wherever there's a mayor, let's add deputy mayor. And that'll, that'll get us through tonight, that'll get us through the next three months, and then we can take all the time we want next year to look at the subcommittee, to look at the additional administrative cleanup that Ali's mentioned before. So at the very least, that would be my recommendation to sort of capture the openness and the increased transparency that I think the subcommittee was going for with our intention and the spirit, I think, of what our conversation was in January. And if we want to get into it deeper in June at our next planning session around transportation or parks board, that's a different conversation than the people we're going to recruit and retain and/or select for the next round of leadership on our boards and commissions, so.
Okay, Bruce wants to respond to Wendy, and then we have Tom.
I know, it's not my turn, but I'm going to just go quickly. That's the process I've been using to keep the deputy mayor in the loop, happy to support that. Yep, happy to support it.
I can confirm that he did.
Okay.
At least for two years. I can't speak for the fore proceeding now, and Tom?
Yeah, you know, Bruce, I hope you have faith in us. We put a lot of effort into this, as Benson said, and I think that some of the elements just may not be visible to you because we're up here doing a quick PowerPoint presentation. I will be voting in favor of this motion. I think it's consistent with what we said, and even though there may be a perceived lack of clarity on some of the elements to you, it's still a much more defined and robust process than what I feel exists today. And I know you wanted me to clarify one of my statements from the last city council meeting where I said, you know, for example, we had somebody that didn't submit an application that was put on a board that was not correct. They did submit an application, but they only had their name on it, but they didn't fill it out. So what I was...
Tom, just please, complete the point. They added their resume to it. They put their name on it, but they put a resume with it.
Okay.
So it's not as if they submitted just their name.
Okay, let's, I think we can put that one to rest and move to the point in hand, please.
True. So what we're trying to do is really get some definition and boundaries around it. It seems reasonable that the city should have a code of conduct or a code of ethics. And just putting that firm, fair, consistent, open, and transparent process together, and some of the things that you brought up around a resume, people don't have resumes or they might not have LinkedIn, those are recommendations, they aren't requirements. What is required is that somebody has to fill out the application process. So I think that staff and the colleagues on the council, Councilmember Wyker and Councilmember Wong and myself, we put a lot of effort into this, and I hope that you'll, you'll trust the process.
Okay, Saleem, and then we're going to figure out what to do.
I'm going to support Wendy Wyker's position on this. I think just to land it tonight and to get a process that gets, that is knowable to Ali in time for this year's recruitment and a level of transparency that I obviously feel good about because...
Because you're on there.
You're on the hook now.
But I think the bigger questions in the work that you did, and it's great work to look at the flow and to think about how it might work in the future, I really want to be part of the conversations about which boards and commissions do we keep, which ones might we add. I think that, that's a council-wide conversation. The ethics stuff, if we can have that figured out before we go into that conversation would be really good. I look at things like conflict of interest, and I might have a conflict for one board, but not for six others, right? And so there's just the intricacies of how do you implement something that make it complicated? A little time helps that out. So I would support that, and I think if we had a good application, and we had the ethics, and we decided what boards to keep and what to sunset, and we might even get to the point where we say, right, I don't, we're midterm on a bunch of people, but we may make them reapply. And we may have to disclose some conflicts. We don't know, right? We don't know how important those things will be, how defined the conflict statements might end up being, and would we at that point put a process in place if we knew we had maybe people serving that shouldn't be serving? There's just so many questions, I would rather defer that for that larger conversation and get something in place this year.
Okay, so I'm actually hearing sort of a general direction toward, I'm going to call them Bruce plus Wendy's edits. We cannot vote on that until we vote on the motion that we currently have before us. So with that...
Can I ask for Wendy to clarify before we vote? Wendy, was your... Can I ask for Wendy to clarify before we vote? Wendy, was your proposal to take-
It's up there in red.
Oh.
I didn't, I'm sorry, that came in a little abruptly.
That's all right.
But I was looking at it going, yeah, there it is. Okay.
So, I'm just confused, because we have one motion on the table, and then are you saying to, that we're going to, are you suggesting that instead of the proposal in the agenda bill that's on the floor now, look at incorporating Bruce's comments to move forward? Are you saying we'll incorporate Bruce's comments into the work that our subcommittee has done?
I think because it's gotten kind of complicated, and we're not clear whether we're going to wordsmith these documents, and/or look at this kind of process and look at, on sunsetting boards or adding new ones, that I will, I don't know what the language will be, but to amend your motion to include one through 10 and continue the subcommittee's work, or just one through 10? I don't know how to do this with the-
I'm going to, if I can make a suggestion, or Bruce, you want to go ahead?
I was going to suggest we vote, I would vote, I would vote to vote down the motion, and then have a second motion that would propose to adopt these changes to the process, and vote on, vote that up or down.
Then how do we continue the modification of the application and all that?
I think we, I would suggest we informally direct staff to continue its work with the areas they, that have been surfaced as concern areas with this whole process, and if that means-
You mean like the inconsistencies?
Inconsistencies and all, and ask staff to bring something back to the full council in terms of direction forward with that, at staff's, at staff's convenience.
Benson?
Yeah, I, okay, I don't want to complicate things, but I mean, I guess, can you pull up that, the slide that has just the proposed committee charter? I just want to make it, I want to make sure we understand, because obviously, there's other slides that talk about the expansion of the scope, and that's obviously not even part of the motion. The motion was only whether or not the council approves the proposed committee charter. So, as I look at that charter, it doesn't preclude Ally going forward with this process, and perhaps even with the changes that Bruce suggested along, you know, with Wendy. So, I guess, as I look at this charter, it seems to me that this charter can actually still stay in place. I mean, but if the council doesn't want the ad hoc committee to continue to function, then of course, the answer is no. But this charter itself is not saying, you know, whatever we, whatever we have done in the past couple of meetings has to be adopted like today. It's just basically a kind of a plan forward. So, I don't know. I, it seems to me that this charter could be, in fact, be adopted and not be inconsistent with something that you're proposing. But, you know.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
There, the process that is steps one through 10, that you made amendments to, and Councilmember Wyker made amendments to, that could be the process for this year. And then the ad hoc committee could still meet and make a recommendation for these boards in the future. The issue is, I need to notify applicants of what the application and selection process is, if it's going to be different this year for the Planning Commission, Design Commission, and Utility Board. And that gets difficult if the application goes out and there's no information for those applicants. So, that's just kind of where I'm, the pivotal point that we're at right now. So, I'm not sure.
I'm, I think we're, Bruce, go ahead.
I'm just suggesting, I don't know, keep, this is my suggestion, not suggesting anybody else agrees with me. Keep, keep the application and webpage all as they are now for this year. I think Ally's point is, is a good one, that there's, if there's a time crunch this year, there is a great deal of breathing room if what we're talking about is next year. But, but honestly, in my opinion, I would, I would sunset the subcommittee for right now, and let, let's bring these bigger, let's, let's set the staff loose on the, the questions that staff can answer and the staff wants, you know, feels need to be addressed. Let's bring back to the full council the thornier questions of how we go forward on, on some of these, these bigger things that feel like council-level issues. And that may well mean we, you know, then reconstitute a subcommittee, but for right now, what I'm suggesting is let's, let's take a pause on the, on the whole subcommittee concept, and break, break this into minimal stuff getting done right now so that works this year, staff doing some technical work, and council then, mini planning session or at meetings ahead of that, deciding that it wants to take on some of these bigger issues.
Okay. So, we, actually, we have a motion on the table right now. What we've started doing is crafting a subsequent motion. So, what I'm going to encourage us to do, if people are comfortable, is to vote on the motion on the table, if you're ready, and then start crafting a second. Now, so, do you have anything, I guess, you want to say with regard to the current motion? Tom?
Yeah, I, in regard to the current motion, I don't think I'm comfortable at all amending it. I think it stands as is. If for no other reason than if we use the existing process, I would not want to, I want people to fill out an application. I think that is a, a very basic expectation, if you serve on a committee, that you fill out an, an application, and just adding on a resume doesn't necessarily check that box. But, I am with Benson and Wendy, and I think Saleem, insofar as the, and I could be wrong, but when Benson had, brought up the proposed committee charter, and granted, I, Bruce has some good insights and Wendy has made some, I think that it is still within the purview of the ad hoc committee to do that. So, I am very much in favor of this motion, and I, I don't want to retract it, and I do believe that it, it has the intended results, and it would meet Bruce's expectation if, if the committee was allowed to proceed.
Wendy, did you have any comments?
I'm just struggling. Say no.
Okay. I'm just going to make one final point, and I'm, I'm going to vote against the amendment, if for no other reason than the purpose is actually limited to design, planning, and utility board. And one of the places where I was particularly very comfortable was having it applied to all boards and commissions. So, as we go forward after this vote, if, well, we'll just leave it at that. Okay.
Point of clarification, Debbie, that I think in the charter, the request for tonight was to expand the scope, and that would address your point.
Right, but we're only voting on the charter itself, which does specifically call out design, planning, and utility. So, the charter itself would not cover the expansion. The charter is only, the, the motion only addresses the charter, it doesn't cover any of the expansion. And I would have concern that the charter is sufficiently vague in other places that council's already discussed. But with that, I would really love to get to a vote on this motion. So, all in favor of, I'm going to read it. The motion, adopt the proposed charter for boards and commissions appointment process ad hoc committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So, motion does not pass. Wendy, did you vote, you voted down, so four to. All right, so we have the opportunity to craft a new motion. Okay.
Mayor Burtland, I would like to make a motion.
Please do.
Ally, could we put the 10 steps back up? And maybe you can, Ally, help me in getting the language right here. But I'd like to move, we change the process for appointments as edited on the screen. That's some horrible language. Ally, what's better language than that?
So, I will put this all in the minutes, so it's shown, but I would say that amend the process for appointments to include the deputy mayor as a reviewer and recommender, and change decisions to recommendations. I think that would pretty much cover.
Okay, as long as you-
It'll look just like this. Yep. Yep.
So.
That's a separate-
I'm stopping.
We're, we're going to try to get one win here. Okay, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
So, here's where I would like to have the subcommittee keep doing its work to expand this charter.
So, that's actually, we have a motion on the table that doesn't include the, so, so this, that's another issue, basically. So, we have a motion on the table.
She could amend, she could amend the motion if she wants.
So, are you, so, yeah, are you recommending a mo-
Whatever I have to do, who's in charge here? Ally, is it an amendment to the motion or is it a discussion? Can you help me understand?
All right. Will your motion actually amend this motion?
I think I want to amend the motion to include a charter that keep looking at this, not urgently, but over the next year.
So, I would actually say that that's a separate motion.
That's a separate motion.
Because this is a process for appointing, and you're talking about a charter for a subcommittee.
Okay, let's do that.
All right, so is there any discussion on the motion on the table?
Wait, I, I'm not sure I understand it. So, what we're, the motion is to take this and accept it for 20-
For, for this year.
For the next couple of months.
Well, until it's changed, essentially.
Until it's changed.
Can we just, can we just add that the next motion could be Wendy's motion?
Sure.
Right? This is just going to keep this done, and then you could make a motion for the charter, right? And we'll vote on that separately, rather than try and blend the two.
And to be clear, if we adopt this motion, we're going to keep the current website, the current application, the current, everything as it is today. This is just how it's going to be processed on the back end.
Unless we were to amend it by a subsequent motion.
It's a great question.
Right.
My intent was to only change this aspect of the whole process.
Which is the behind-the-scenes process, not what our public is applying to and looking at on the website.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, our public sees it in the sense that they, they observe what the council does, but, yes.
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the applicant-facing process would be unchanged from what it is today.
I'll try.
Okay, council, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Well, can I ask one clarifying question? This, this assumes the process is as is, but for the, the 10 steps, but how does, does anything change with the vetting process or reviewing of an?
The motion as it is addresses points one through 10. If council wants to suggest and debate subsequent changes to the process in its entirety, we can do so. But I would suggest that we vote on the motion that's currently on the table.
All right, I'm, I'm good with that.
All right, all in favor? Oh, hold on.
One thing we discussed, but we didn't do here, is we didn't expand this process to apply to everything, did we?
This is the process that applies to everything.
Okay.
Yeah, this is current process. The red is the new language that would be added. So, this is just in, just, you know, changing a few words, recommendations instead of decisions, and adding the deputy mayor in. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six oh. All right, so.
Okay.
Are there any additional?
I move.
Is your microphone on? I'm sorry.
I move that the boards and commissions, citizen appointment, ad hoc committee continue its work, albeit at a slower pace, to assist staff with updating and revising and clarifying and improving the language and forms, is that too much words, for our boards and commissions?
So, you're addressing the application form. That's what I took from your-
The application form and the criteria, maybe, for the boards. But we'll leave the boards-
Application form and suggested criteria?
Correct, because that's part of the form.
If you, membership criteria would be good, because then that kind of puts all the term limits and then all that.
Anything that has to do with the cover letter or the form.
Basically, is that the expansion, the expanded scope, with the exception of item five?
Microphone, please.
Yeah.
I'm just asking if that's the expanded, the expanded scope excluding number five.
The existing charter and then expanding the purpose to all the boards and commissions, because I think the charter includes the membership criteria, right? Qualifications, yeah, but it's under responsibilities.
This, that's in red now? So, basically, you're making a motion to, for the subcommittee's charter to include items one through four?
Cover page, never seen it. But, be for all the boards and commissions, not just planning, design, and utility?
Right, that's number three. Adds in the arts council, community service, and open space.
Okay.
Okay.
And of course, all of this would be coming back to the council for approval.
Right.
This would be a recommendation from the subcommittee back to the council.
So, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, council, discussion?
As maker of the motion, you guys should go first.
Sorry, speak to the motion.
So, I, I think this committee has done a lot of work with staff in the last two months to sort of try to improve a system that could use some enhancements. I think we'll have some time in the next year to figure this out and put it in place for the next year's appointments. And I think on the June 9th mini planning session, we should talk about if we have the right boards, and which ones we might want to sunset, and which ones we might want to add. But for now, I think the subcommittee and the charter can keep, keep up with the work we've already done and bring the recommendations back to council to enhance and improve the system that we have in place. Bruce?
I, again, compliment the subcommittee for its, for its diving in and for the amount of work it's done. But I, I believe that it makes sense to take the more technical aspects of this and hand them off to staff, and keep at the council level where the, the full council's engaged on it, the, the bigger questions. And that's just a reflection of, I guess, my own reading of what's, what's been put together so far, and my sense that I, I'd like to maintain a, a broader constituency of, of people looking at, looking at where that's going.
Saleem, any comment, Benson or Tom?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, as I'm looking at points one through four, you know, as far as the application form goes, I certainly, you know, obviously, staff will be doing the, the main drafting of it. I mean, certainly, I think it should be subject to review by the full council. You know, I don't know if you're concerned about the wording, Bruce, but I mean, like, two and three, this idea of developing membership criteria, I mean, would you, I think it is important to at least have an intentional process to look at what the current membership criteria is. It may very well stay the same, but instead of perhaps developing membership criteria, would you be more, would you find it more acceptable if it's simply a matter of making recommendations about possible criteria? I mean, ultimately, everything's left to the full council to decide on. But I-
So, I mean, thanks, thank you for asking the question. So, to best of my knowledge, today, design commission has fairly complicated set of factors that, that go into the, trying to get a makeup of that committee that has landscape architect, architect, several other things about it. Utility board, I, I don't think, other than we've always tried to look for people who had some technical savvy, but there was no specific requirements. Planning commission, I don't know that there was anything specific. But, to my mind, asking staff, asking city attorney and city clerk to go and, and take a look at that and try and unify it to the extent that they can, feels like a reasonable thing to do, rather than having a subcommittee trying to, to construct that. That, and, and certainly asking staff to, to look at what best practice is in other communities, to make sure that we have sort of a logic to what we're doing that aligns with that, feels like a reasonable, a reasonable assignment of the work. Similarly, with the item three, arts council, and board, community service board, and so on. So, I just, I think that work put into staff's hands can be competently handled and, and brought back to the full council. back to the full Counsel.
The only thing I would say is some of the work with respect to the Planning, Design, and Utility Board, some of it's been done. I mean, as far as the initial drafting, so I don't think there's any, you know... And the feedback that I remember hearing from the ad hoc committee members was relatively positive as far as those changes. So I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot of additional work that perhaps needs to be done with those three committees. But, you know, again, I don't, you know, who knows about the other ones? But, you know, yeah, I mean, you know, the way it's been working, of course, and a lot of these committees, is that the staff does the heavy lifting early on, and they're just looking for feedback from the committee members. And so I still think there's some value to having that initial look by, you know, three committee members, three Counsel members, and before then comes back to the full Board, full Counsel, sorry, for further discussion. But, you know, that's where I would be. The process, it seems to me, makes sense, but I certainly understand your perspective as far as having everything come back to the full Counsel without going through some sort of Subcommittee review.
Julie, I saw you reaching for the microphone, or was I just mistaken?
It got clarified.
Okay, great. Saleem?
I guess I'm a little confused where we're at. We're at the expanded charter, less number 5. And we're... Are we gonna incorporate, make recommendations as a purpose?
I just...
I mean, I feel like the charter says recommendations, and the committee will have a final recommendation, essentially.
That was my statement that I made right after Councilmember Wyker made her motion.
So all the developed members...
All of this would be part of the scope of the charter, but every... The committee cannot make a decision. Everything has to come back as a recommendation to the full Counsel. So that's, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I could support the continuing of the work. My concerns would be that there's not too many meetings, and that there is some final recommendation. This thing doesn't continue, and so I would say if the final recommendation is at least within one year, and there are no more than one meeting per month, or, I don't know, I mean, are you meeting every other month?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I think what he's saying is, I think he's saying reasonable effort, if I can...
Yeah, without overburdening the staff.
No, I agree.
I don't want to throw away the work that you've done.
I think it makes sense to put a sunset on the ad hoc.
Yeah, so if there's a final recommendation, that actually shuts the thing down. If we just say that must occur within a year, that gets it in time for, hopefully, Ally to implement it. If we can incorporate something like that, I can support it.
Okay, I'm gonna take a turn. Bruce, you wanted to go?
Falls to you to offer an amendment to it if you want to try and get that in, because otherwise, it's not officially part of the...
What is the... If we could know the current motion, then I'll try...
You know, it seems to me, and Ally, help me here, what I'm sensing that we're having is a motion that says, "Adopt the proposed charter for Boards and Commissions to address points 1 through 4," with 1 through 4...
Adopt a proposed charter and expand the scope to include these four items.
To include these... Well, this isn't...
Those four items are not listed in the charter at all.
Become the charter versus in addition to the charter. That was my understanding, is 1 through 4 is the charter.
I think 1 through 4 gets incorporated into the charter, and in the charter, we get rid of what we already took care of in the first motion, right?
Now I think I'm confused.
It's your motions. I thought this was in addition. So the main part... The main purpose of the charter right now is to come up with a selecting an appointment process for the Planning Commission, Design Commission, Utility Board. That's what the charter is. That's what's being proposed. If this motion by Councilmember Wyker is to just make the charter these four things, then we can clarify that in the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna look to Wendy.
We adopt the proposed charter, include these four points, so modify this charter to include those four points. So I see responsibility that identify with qualifications, right? I think we need to add Saleem's point about duration, so under duration, have it end within a year.
We can do that if...
Right?
So Councilmember Ackers is okay with that?
I'm gonna start wordsmithing the charter so we can be clear, right? So adopt this charter with those four points and a sunset date within a year.
Okay, and are you also saying including the original purpose statement in the charter? Which is, "The purpose of the committee is to review and recommend to the full City Council to maintain the current process or propose a new process for selecting and appointing citizen volunteers of the Design Commission, Planning Commission, and Utility Board."
So number 3 says we're gonna add those other boards, so...
You're gonna develop membership criteria for those other boards. This is the appointment and selection process.
Right.
Which would then be for 2019, because you've already made your decision for 2018.
I'm just, you know, since this...
Well, I want to hear from first Wendy, because she's got the original motion.
The Utility Board is very technical, right? We'll be lucky to get anybody with industry expertise in that, so... The criteria is loose.
I'm going, I'm... Let's, so, hold on just a second, I think we're missing each other. You're asking to add these four things, which I think everybody understands, but the charter that we've presented, that's proposed, has a fifth thing, the first thing, the one thing, which was to propose an appointment and selection process for the three boards. So are you saying that you want to keep that and add these four, or are you saying replace it?
Replace that with those four.
Got it.
I think is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, sorry.
Right? Is that what we all talked about?
Okay, so the purpose is replaced by items 1 through 4. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, and adding a sunset date within the year.
Okay, so it's 1 through 4, and then meeting schedule is probably where we would amend to put something about, without, you know...
Now we know it's by the end of the year, so how many meetings is the most you think you would have? No, that's fine.
Yeah, we don't need to set the meeting.
Do you need six meetings?
I think staff can... Staff can sort of work on that.
Okay, well, I'll just let staff take care of that, right? They're not gonna let you have more than you can handle.
Right, right.
So are we saying December 31st, for the sake of clarity? Okay, we... As we continue to wordsmith this, are there any other comments? What I have so far right now is we're voting on a proposed charter that is as in the packet with the following changes. Under purpose, we remove the text that currently exists and include items 1 through 4. Meeting schedule would basically be replaced with a sunset date of December 31st, 2018. Are there any other elements? Okay, I'm gonna add a few comments here. I might be voting for this, but here's where I want to provide some guidance, or some input. This still leaves open many of the concerns that were raised about what the application itself looks like insofar as whether it's LinkedIn, whether it's a resume, in my case, you know, duration of residency. One of the other areas of concern that I had in this was the selection criteria or membership criteria. To Bruce's point, to me, it is super important that we do not reduce the number of people or residents who would be enthusiastic and excited on the basis of having professional or being expected to have professional criteria that relate to that Board and Commission. There are many people who may have recreational and/or passions around these topics that may not show up in a traditional resume or list of experiences. The other element, too, that I know was a point that actually Ally raised with me, is you would want to ensure that there's a sufficient amount of diversity. And diversity can also mean different parts of Mercer Islands. It can mean different ages. It can even mean different levels of professional experience. So were I to vote for this, this broader, more expansive theme is something that I hope the Subcommittee in its entirety would adopt, so that rather than narrowing and constricting or restricting the process itself and the citizens that are interested, it might in fact serve to clarify. So that would just be my principled set of points. Benson?
To your point, Mayor, I mean, again, this is hopefully reassuring to the rest of the Counsel, but again, in the ad hoc committee, as far as the issue of trying to be more inclusive and encourage diversity, we had already discussed the issue that applicants would be... There'd be some sort of geographic, so not everybody is on First Hill, not everybody's down the south part of Mercer Island. So there was already that discussion.
There might be Mid-Island there.
Yeah.
You've got an opportunity there.
And then the other point was that, and I think this was, I think it came from staff, because it was just a great, in discussing about criteria, it wasn't necessarily all about, you know, your resume or your academics, whatever. There was also a discussion that they would focus on your past actions that would be consistent with your expression of interest on a particular board. So again, there was that recognition, that it's not all about paper credentials. They also want to see a person's actual actions be consistent with your interest in serving on a board. So I'm hoping that that provides you some assurance that, again, the ad hoc committee was looking at all these different factors.
Okay, Bruce?
I appreciate that the scope of this has narrowed and that it is more tightly constrained. And as I've said, the criterion, I think, were, or need to be, they need to be revisited or sort of standardized, so I'm not disagreeing with that. However, to Benson's point, to sort of allay our concerns by saying that the Subcommittee is, has been talking about these things, does feel... It frustrates me, because I hear what you say, yet when I look at what you've produced, it feels like it goes in the opposite direction. So I respect, and I appreciate that you had the conversation, but I think at the end of the day, the Subcommittee then made a decision to go in a different direction, which was not reflective of the direction that I would think we ought to be going, and that also the Mayor is suggesting is an important direction to go. So that's where I feel like there's a disconnect between the Subcommittee's direction and what I would be proposing to do. And for that reason, I still think having the full Counsel engage on this rather than the Subcommittee makes sense and will not support the motion.
So Wendy, any final... Tom?
Yep, I would, will definitely be supporting the motion. I think in the spirit of creating ad hoc committees, and we just need to trust our... The efforts and definitely your comments are taken into consideration, Bruce, and we will be, if the motion passes, it'll all come back to the full Counsel to make sure that you have a final pass at it, for sure, to make sure that nothing was missed. But we definitely had a lot of talks about inclusivity and diversity, and those provisions hopefully will be addressed. But at the same time, we really wanted to make sure that we had the best process in place to ensure that the Boards and Committees that Counsel and staff believe that we need as a community are staffed with the right resources, too. So I hope we meet and exceed your expectations if the motion passes when we come back.
Saleem, any final comments?
You know, I'll just, again, thank you for the work, and I'll say that where this thing got me confused was when we start talking about a process that has a committee that doesn't exist, right? These things got off-kilter, and then when the forum comes out and you have proposed forum edits, and then we just don't have elements quite nailed down. I just hope that in the form of the recommendations, maybe you can give us a little bit of that narrative about what the discussion did evolve around and what components were... So we don't look at it contextually and say, "Gosh, these guys never thought about this or that." No, they did, but maybe in the set of recommendations, it's less form-driven and more conceptual, so that each one stands on its own. But, you know, you'll figure it out, I'm sure. I'll support this.
Yeah, the final comment, actually, now as I look at it, says the committee's comprised of three Counsel members, and then it references quite a list of city staff who are working with the committee, staff, the committee. I guess... I'm trying to think how to word this so it doesn't come out wrong, and it might just come out wrong, but my intentions are good. Okay, which is, it would seem that the three of you are the ones voting. I would hope that the many years of experience and the perspective that comes from staff would also be reflected in the votes that you take and the content that you would bring forward to Counsel subsequently, so that we make sure that we're working in concert with our staff, particularly the senior professional staff we have on this team. So with that, are we ready to vote? Okay, so, do I need to repeat the motion? Are we good?
Just a quick question. Since we expanded the scope, then called include all Boards and Commissions, is this, are these really the right people to have, or do they not need this? Because if these DSG, Planning and Public Works, to me, mirrors the three committees that you were targeting?
Correct.
Well, do they have to...
Arts, for example, yeah.
Do they have to show up to all your meetings? Now that your process is broader...
Yeah, can I recommend, Julie and I just spoke very quickly, I think what we will probably do is, since this will now incorporate more staff members from the other Boards and Commissions, we may, Julie and I will have a staff meeting with the staff liaisons and get feedback and information from them to bring then to the Subcommittee meeting, so that we aren't taking 12 staff members' time at that meeting. Does that sound better? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. People have said I don't need to repeat what the motion is, so I'm gonna take your word. I could do it. I could do it. All right, so with that, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 5-1. All right. No, I didn't necess... I was hoping it was gonna be easy, but I wasn't expecting it to be easy. But...
Moving on.
Moving on, exactly. So we now move on to other business. Are there any upcoming Councilmember absences to report? Okay, moving on then to the planning schedule. Julie?
Mayor, the only thing I wanted to point out is we'll want to schedule, most likely, another executive session on March 20th, depending upon how many items. I know there is definitely a potential litigation item pending, a litigation item. So why don't we just plan for five, and if we need to reduce the time, we'll make that note on the agenda. So that'll be a new addition on March 20th.
Great, the only thing, just a quick reminder that earlier this evening, we talked about having staff take a look to understand if we would need a special meeting with regard to recommendations for any levy, capital, operating, et cetera, at a time when both the Finance Director, the City Manager, and hopefully all of Counsel, too, can be here. So, yeah.
Sorry. Is June 9 still of interest for a mini-planning session, or are staff overwhelmed and chip really overflowing with work items that maybe we want to not have that?
Initially, we were thinking, just at the staff level, I haven't talked to Counsel at all about this, the initial thought was, since we had planned on bringing a number of the big discussion items like levy, capital, those kinds of things, starting in May and all of June, whether or not it made sense to host that meeting on the 9th. Given that I think we do, it sounds like want to have a broader conversation around maybe Boards and Commissions on the 9th, we can devote the time for that. But maybe it's, instead of a full day, it's a half-day, it's a morning session on that item. We're going to talk about whether or not we need to modify the schedule or add more Counsel discussion time on the agenda. So we may need the 9th, but if we can do away with it, or maybe just make it half-a-day, that'd be great. But let me talk to staff and get back to you.
Yes, Benson?
I just want, I am gonna be, I asked for people who are gonna be absent. I'm gonna be gone on the August 7.
Okay, so going back to mini-planning session... Okay, so, going back to mini planning session, I understand we all hold our calendars for the whole day, and staff may come back with a recommended agenda that's other whole day, or less than whole day.
And I'll second, I mean, I'll second that in the sense, it's hard to get something onto our calendars, it's easy to take it off, it's been on our calendars for a while, and so, let's, let's keep it until such time as we really decide we don't need it. The one other comment I was going to make is, you are showing the second August meeting, and that one is one that we traditionally don't have. If we hold that meeting, I would be absent from that, but in my time, I don't believe we've ever held that second August meeting, so. And you actually have something scheduled in there, you've got the mental health council.
Save all the items to...
Right.
Make sure we capture. It's an interlocal.
We can reschedule interlocal. Would you like me to potentially cancel it on the August 21st meeting?
I think that might generally reflect the reality.
Would you like that also for this?
Not the reality.
How about the full month of August?
No.
Do you want to cancel the meeting now?
I would suggest we do that, but...
Okay. All right, does council want to, I guess we take a vote on whether or not we're ready to cancel the August 21 meeting?
I just, to Bruce's earlier point, it's easier to...
Microphone, please.
Oh, it's true. To Bruce's earlier point, sometimes it's easier to take it off than put it back on, and we don't really know what's going to, we have a look ahead calendar, but there are a lot of substantive issues that might come up later in the summer.
Well, we are probably looking at some additional budget meetings this fall.
Exactly.
So, you know, the summer, probably not, but I would say, starting this fall, indeed, you will probably need to have more than two meetings.
So, council, are you ready to actually have a, have a vote on the August 21 meeting? I'm seeing two thumbs up, I'll give it a thumbs up, just have a vote.
I don't care.
Okay, all in favor of canceling the August 21 meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes 5-1. Ally, you've got your 21, August 21, cancel.
And then, let me just come back to this, the question of the first July meeting being moved. I still haven't heard where that's actually going to land.
I understood from your last meeting, you moved it to June 26th, but...
Okay, and that's fine by me, I just didn't know that there'd actually been a decision on that, so. Okay, so June 26th. And I think it shows on here as June 26th, right? So, yeah.
Anything else regarding the planning session? Or, sorry, the planning calendar? All right, good. Board appointments, there aren't any. Not yet. All right, so, council member report, so we'll start to the right this time, Councilmember Bassett.
No report. None.
Okay, Benson? Wendy?
I just want to brag for our mayor for a moment, she gave a speech at an Eagle ceremony on Sunday night with Howard Schultz, the CEO of Starbucks, so she was in...
Not with.
She came first, so anyway, it was very cool to have her speak to a large audience of Boy Scouts and families, and she did a really good job, so well done.
Oh, thank you.
So, that was nice.
Just a couple of things on my part. First, just so you all know, what also took place on Saturday night, it was the YTN Gala, and after having conversed with our city attorney, and of course, our city manager, I don't know exactly what the auction item was titled, I don't remember, but basically, you get to be mayor for a day, and I believe that that particular item went for over $1,000, so that was pretty exciting. I was impressed that Julie and I could together offer lunch and other goodness. They'll be gavelling in a council meeting this other...
You have to pay them to take it.
I might have gone higher if that was the way it was. And the other thing, too, being, I did speak at the chamber on Thursday, again, calling out the work that Tom and Benson would be doing with them to understand specifically how we can, as council, help them. And then, today, Councilmember Wyker and I, we've been spending a lot of time together lately, we were at a lunch in which Arch received an award, and so, Arch also invited its Eastside member city, so Mercer Island did receive an award through Arch for the work that we've been doing for affordable housing. So, with that, I believe we are now adjourned.